All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mizrahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Maness?
Yes.
Mayor Boobla?
Yes, we're all present. Looking and listening for declarations of conflicts of interest? We have none. Close session will be at the end of our meeting. And approval of agenda as posted or amended?
So move a second.
Two motions, two seconds. Clear color, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mizrahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Maness?
Yes.
Mayor Boobla?
Yes. All right, we are moving on to the fun part here. Employee of the Month. We have Taryn Perry, who is the payroll coordinator. And she's watching online, I believe, yes? On our Zoom. So, Taryn Perry is the payroll coordinator administrator. Taryn began working at the city of Turlock in April 2015 as an account clerk in the finance department. She currently works as a payroll coordinator and administration. Her peers have the following to say about her. "Taryn is always available to answer any questions or help with any issues we have with payroll, interpreting the MOUs, benefits, employee questions, et cetera. She has such a great attitude and is always friendly and easy to work with. I can always count on her to walk me through the process and get me the answers to the crazy situations that seem to happen in our department with payroll. This past year with COVID has been extremely challenging and has put a whole new dimension to payroll. Taryn has been so patient and so understanding." Her personal hobbies: she enjoys spending time with her husband Brian and her son Gage. They love going to Lake Tahoe and also enjoy a visit to Monterey to explore the coast. She volunteers at Sacred Heart where her son attends school. And she's an avid San Francisco Giants and Arizona Wildcats fan. So let's all welcome our month, I'm sorry, Employee of the Month, Taryn. You're out there? If you raise your hand, we'll unmute you. Thinks they have a quorum.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. You know, it really is such a privilege to serve the city and its very dedicated employees. I'm honored by this nomination from my peers and I'm so appreciative of all their hard work, especially over the last couple of years with COVID and everything being so crazy. But I just wanted to say thank you so much and I'm honored.
Thank you, and thank you for doing such a great job for the city of Turlock. All right, Lisa's excited, sitting over there. She can't wait to tell us about the Carnegie Arts Center 2020 annual report and what's going to happen in this year.
It's nice to be back.
Welcome.
This is our, actually, this is our annual get-together. So for new council members who may not be as familiar with the Carnegie Arts Center, I just want to quickly introduce you to what we do. The Carnegie is the community's resource for discovering and learning through the arts. And we promote creative activity in all formats for all ages. Our galleries exhibit art from around the globe and around the corner. We also cater our programs to youth and families as well as more seasoned art lovers and audience members. Whenever possible, we link different art forms together through our offerings of classes, lectures, films, concerts, poetry readings, and family activities, bringing something of interest to the table for anyone at any time. Admittedly, our 2020 annual report looks different than it has in years past. Councilmembers will notice that difference. In 2019, my annual report had us welcoming over 4,000 visitors to our galleries. This year, 584.
Uh-oh.
Sounds really pathetic and disappointing, but we had less than 14 weeks in the whole year that we were allowed to be open to the public with our art galleries. There were no school field trips. Our rental events disappeared after March. And most in-person activities were off our calendar as well. As the participation was dropping during the worst of the pandemic year, obviously we were concerned about a drop in income from many different kinds of sources: our rentals, classes, exhibition admissions, all of that. The charts that you'll see in your packet, the annual, the printed report that you were given, cover the financials from the 2019-20 fiscal year, so half of it is going up to when the pandemic hit, and the last three months, four months are post-2020 closure. So next year's annual report will include the bulk of the 2020 problems. We've been fortunate, though, financially, to have received support from the community through continued sponsorships, memberships, and donations. In fact, our donations were up this year compared to last year. We lost less than 1% of our membership revenue during the time that we were closed, and our sponsorship remained incredibly stable. We were also lucky to receive county and state COVID relief grants to help us through. We took advantage of both rounds of payroll protection loans to keep our staff working and engaged. And we were very fortunate at the beginning of 2020 to have received a grant from the EMC Health Foundation to run a lecture series for them, which was, we, I'll talk about that in a minute, which really helped smooth out what could have been a very rocky year otherwise. Our endowment fund, which I will also talk about in a minute, also was a key factor in getting us through a couple of difficult fiscal years. And as you can see from our participation, we did manage to keep some things going. So I brought a few highlights. 2020 with the grant from the Make Dreams Real Boyett Foundation. We started a program to train teen docents. We had seven teenagers sign up, even during the COVID, this all was happening last August. So we did our whole training fully masked and socially distanced. And had 17, three from Modesto, four from Turlock, complete the program. They had, unfortunately, pretty much zero opportunity to employ the skills that they learned until we got to the spring of 2021. So we're happy that they're still engaged. We are starting a new cohort of teen docents. We already have nine, maybe 10 teens, signed up to participate in the program that starts on August 31st. And it's open to teens in eighth through 12th grades.
You know Nathan's not a teenager. He just looks that young.
He has a daughter. We were just talking about this. Students in grades eight through 12 in Stanislaus County who want to learn about and talk about art with our visitors and an application. And complete details about the program can be found on our website. Another highlight of the year, as I mentioned, was our lecture series funded by the EMC Health Foundation and our dear friend Jeffrey Lewis. And in 2020, the theme of the lecture series was children and challenges in mental health. Our first two lectures that we held in January and March, while they were free to the public, were basically sold out through over 200 registrations to attend both of those in-person lectures in January and March. The last one was held the first week of March as things were starting to disintegrate around us. The remaining lectures, we were able to move to online presentations. The subject matter changed and shifted. So instead of offering one on what you can do for your kids in public school, we had a distance learning with two child psychologists who helped talk parents and other audience members through a Zoom webinar through some of the challenges in distance learning. We also, one of them was offered in December with a specialist working with Jeffrey and his team on educator health and well-being. So it was more geared toward how the educators and the teachers, working on their own mental health, can help the kids succeed better under these difficult circumstances. We have already confirmed with EMC that we'll be doing another series of lectures in 2022. And we're working out the details on the speakers. I think we have one to go before we're set with our program for the 2022 lecture series. Transitioning programs to a virtual space was a bit of a challenge. We have a very small staff and very few of us are technologically inclined. We're more hands-on creatives. But we were able to move artist talks into a virtual space for conversation. We were able to record and stream different family activities. So our family nights missed a couple of months, but as soon as we could, we got those back up and running. We were handing out free art packs with art supplies that linked to the activities that would be streamed online. And we had our first online fundraiser. We had our Arttober Art Auction, which will be returning this year. So all the bidding was online, but we set up the objects so they could be photographed and anybody who did wander in could see them in person. We'll be doing that again this October. Most of these programs were well-attended as far as we were concerned for not being like live in-person events. We weren't getting 100 families, but we were at least reaching some people, and each time they grew a little bit bigger. We are cautiously but excitedly bringing back live events. We had our first in-person Family Friday in July. We had 30 families attend, which was great. We hope that the one in August, which is August 20th, will see just as many families attending. That's going to be a Yosemite Renaissance scavenger hunt. And our next gallery talk with in-person artists talking about their work will be this Friday, August 13th, at 5:30 PM. We have, I think, seven or more artists scheduled to talk about their work, and we'll follow that up with a reception for the two exhibitions, the Carnegie Arts Showcase and the Yosemite Renaissance Exhibition. Creating a virtual space on our website for exhibitions was a little challenging, but our intrepid web designer, Nick Weber, managed to make it happen. So Firing Imagination, Ready, Set, Show, and Farms and Fields were all only viewable online. They never got displayed in our galleries at all. And we've continued through the next couple of exhibitions after these three to post-exhibitions online. The most recent one, the Library Opening Doors Exhibition, was all both in the gallery and online. Probably the biggest disappointment of the whole year for me was our fall exhibition, which was set to open in September of 2020 and run through the end of December. And it was called Cut Up, Cut Out. And it was a traveling exhibition organized originally by the Bedford Gallery in Walnut Creek that had been on a nationwide tour. I think we were the 12th or 13th museum to get the Cut Up, Cut Out exhibition. It featured a roster of international artists. There were artists' works from Paris, from Morocco, from Australia, from South Africa, as well as all across the United States and Canada. And the unique thing about this show is all of these artists work in, with different materials, but they pierce or cut their work in some way. So it was typical, you expect like cut paper and collage things, but beyond that, some of the works in the show were created using maps and books and cardboard and plywood and drywall, plastic. We had a couple artists who cut into metal, like oil drums and gas cans. We had an artist who cut up an actual, like, car tire into like this lacy, beautiful pattern that you can see in the slide on the right. We had an artist who made jewelry out of cut-up foam books. And they're really interesting because she was from Iceland, so they were like Reykjavik phone books. We had an artist who did these fantastic collages made completely out of cut-up dollar bills, which might have been illegal. But the U.S. Treasury Department bought one and has one hanging in their offices, so we think it's okay. It was a beautiful show, some of the most challenging and unique works of art from some of the best artists I could think of. And we went to a lot of effort. This show was difficult to install. It was an expensive show to get, and it was open for three and a half weeks out of the 16 weeks that it was supposed to be seen. We had field trip curriculum planned for this. We had ideas for programs and events and couldn't do anything. So 2020's over. I want to talk about what's happening next because it's way more interesting now. We're beginning our new season. Our 2021-22 season starts in September, celebrating the reopening of the Carnegie Arts Center 10 years ago. It seems like forever, but most of you probably know about our history, from the founding of the library in 1916 to the fire in 2005 to the start of construction in 2010. The Carnegie Foundation's partnership with the city of Turlock to make this all happen over the last 10 years has really paid off for the community in a big, big way. Our official anniversary will be 9/10/2021, since we opened on 9/10/11. And that day started a real new chapter for the arts in our community. Over the past 10 years, we have been able to provide things that were never available in this community before. Field trips for elementary school students to see the art of great masters like Ansel Adams, Pablo Picasso, Jose Guadalupe Posada, Alfonso Muches, Juan Miro, and more. They have seen, students from our local schools have seen paintings, photographs, prints, drawings, ceramics, and quilts. Excluding last year, we didn't have any students. We've had more than 20,000 school kids from around the valley come to experience art in a professional museum setting and have that art connected to art lessons in our studios that schools in our neighborhood often are struggling to provide. And this is really what we're celebrating, this 10th anniversary year, not just the last 10 years, but the impact that we plan to have for the next 10 years and the 10 years after that and the 10 years after that at least. We'll open the season with an exhibition called Making Your Mark, because we feel like we've made our mark in the community. This is a traveling exhibition of works from the Hettinger Collection. The Hettinger family has been collecting art for many years, over many generations. And they're a family that owned a chain of hardware stores in the Northeast and the Mid-Atlantic states. So their collection of art focuses on tools and hardware and building and construction. The show features master artists. We've got Wayne Tebow, Jacob Lawrence, Jim Dying, Clay Oldenburg, in prints and drawings that focus on artistic practice. So the content for the exhibition is really about how we make art and how tools make things and what the tools are that artists use. I think this is going to be a great show for the field trip groups that'll be coming in because we can really highlight how things get made, how things get built, and that seems really fitting at a time that the Carnegie is celebrating the rebuilding and reopening and the remaking of our center. Events coming up this fall include an evening of gratitude where we'll celebrate the Carnegie's founding donors, members, and volunteers without whom we would not have been able to open our doors. A lot of that credit goes to the donors to the Endowment Fund, which now tops $2 million in value, which has basically secured the future of the Carnegie Arts Center. We plan to make some exciting announcements very soon about our 10th Anniversary Endowment Fund campaign, which includes a special program. We've commissioned two unique works of art that will be available to donors to the endowment campaign as a thank you gift. And we have a major new donor announcement to the Endowment Fund, which I'm not able to talk about yet, but we're very excited about that, hopefully September. We are also right now holding a contest for students in Stanislaus County to help us design street banners for the downtown Turlock Main Street light poles. We will select at least 10 banner designs by local kids. They can be ages four through 18. There's, all the information is on our website now. Their designs just have to highlight something about the number 10. It can be the word 10, it can be the number 10, it can be 10 things in a picture, all of which will be juried. They'll all be exhibited, all of the entries will be exhibited in our next youth art show in June of 2022, and we'll select at least 10 winners whose banner, whose designs will be blown up onto the vinyl street banners and hang throughout the downtown all fall long, thanks to generous sponsors, The Greenery Nursery, the Turlock Downtown Property and His Association, and Robic Refrigeration. As I said, our Arttober Art Auction will be going on, and in the spring we'll have, we'll be reinvigorating the Art of Design Home and Garden Tour with five unique homes available for touring on May, some on May 13th, some on May 14th. And then we'll cap out our year in June, on June 25th, with our 10th Anniversary Block Party funded by Gampoli Family Farms, Kids Care Dental, and Orthodontics. We're taking over the Chiefs parking lot for vendors and music and art activities of all kinds. It's a free event, open to the community, and we hope everyone will be there. And that's our contact information, where you can get all the information. And I am looking forward to seeing you all. You have invitations to Friday night's reception in your little packets. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Great job. It's good to be back.
Yeah. I haven't had to do one of these in a while, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Lisa. We'll see you on Friday 13th.
Yes.
All right. Moving on, Mr. Bray, roads update, sir.
Yes, it is hard to follow up, Lisa.
Right.
That is for sure. I don't know, I don't know how she can still talk.
You need your bouncing ball to get you going.
That was a lot of information. Right. So good evening, Mayor and council members. For your roads update tonight, I have brief four different items. First, we held our second interviews. At our last update, we had identified our top candidates for our roads program manager. And as of last Friday, we held second interviews, and we are making a conditional offer. We hope to have the position start middle of September. So that's, that's great news on that front. The Headstrom Project update, all of our design documents and paperwork are currently at Caltrans, waiting final approval. Once Caltrans approves the city's request to proceed, then the city can advertise that project. I would anticipate that to occur at the end of August. So depending on when we actually receive Caltrans approval, we'll have to estimate to see, is there enough workable weather that we can advertise the project and at least get started on maybe the concrete work and then suspend for the winter and then come back with the paving in the summer.
So we need to pray for global warming?
I don't think we need to pray for that. I think it's already here.
Okay.
And then the Golden State update, we heard back from a contractor. The contractor has submitted his schedule, and they are planning on starting September 13th. That puts concrete work in September, demolition and concrete work in September, grinding and paving work in October, and finalizing the striping, raising the iron, and putting in the new traffic signal loops in November. So that's still, is compliant with a typical October-November season as it relates to temperatures. And then lastly, the RFP and RFI for the roads innovation strategies have been advertised. They're advertised on the city's website. The final responses for both are due August 20th by 4:00 PM, which is Friday. And to date, I have not received any requests for information or questions yet. And that concludes my update so far.
Any questions for Mr. Bray? Lander?
Lander, I can, I don't know the status off the top of my head. I'll, I'll be ready to talk about it at our next update, for sure.
Golden State, he already spoke about 9/13, he says. And then the southeast quadrant?
Southeast quadrant, so the bids have been awarded. The contractor is anxious on working. I want to say we had our pre-construction meeting last week, or it's scheduled for this week. We should see work very soon, within, within the next couple of weeks. And I can make sure to bring a schedule on that as well.
Any other questions for Mr. Bray?
Yeah, I just have a question. Mr. Bray, was there like a delay with the Golden State? How come the contractor's not starting until September 13th? Because wasn't this supposed to start but for the fair being in the way?
It was, yeah. So the delay was, the city asked the contractor, directed the contractor to revise the anticipated work for, for the concrete work, the curb gutters, sidewalks, and the curb ramps. That delayed their schedule, so we have to get back on their schedule now.
When did we make that request to the contractor?
May-June, probably. And we've been working with the contractor Granite Construction since then. We have finalized the change order request from the contractor. And, yeah, so we finalized it here recently, and we're getting back on their schedule now.
Thank you.
So Mr. Petrelakis and I met with the CEO of TID, and she said that there was ways for us to get money for actual lighting for road projects such as Lander, et cetera. So perhaps you can connect with her and see what, what we need to do for that?
Sure, yeah. TID released their community, community grant program, I believe.
We don't want to steal from Ms. Van Gilder, though. She's got, she's got the first amount for the lights over at the Padretti, I believe.
Yeah, sure thing. I, I can reach out to the GM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have public participation. This is a time set aside to discuss items that we could discuss at a later time. Nothing we will respond about today. Welcome home.
Thank you, Mayor Boobla. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to address council on items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and on any item on tonight's agenda. For items listed on the agenda, we ask that you please defer your comments until that item is heard by council. For members of the public participating in person and who are interested in addressing the council, please raise your hand once the mayor opens public comment and before she closes public comment. For members of the public participating remotely, please, excuse me, please press the raise hand feature on your screen or press star nine from your telephone keypad once the mayor opens public comment and before she closes public comment. Members of the public participating in person will be called upon first, and then we will move to those participating remotely. For those participating remotely, they will hear an automated prompt indicating their line has been unmuted, and that is when their comment period will begin. Please be aware, for those participants who have accessed the meeting through the phone number provided on the agenda, their personal phone numbers will be displayed publicly. Lastly, we request members who choose to address the council to please state their first and last name in the event any follow-up is needed. However, this is not mandatory.
All right, we will open it, and I do have one blue card, Mr. Treewiler. We're still on the five-minute until we get our handbook situated, so.
Yes, good evening, council staff and Turlock citizens. Milt Treewiler. Citizens of, citizens of Turlock, our city is at the exceptional drought level, which is the highest intensity there is. And this is just the second year in our current drought. If you look at this chart of our city or our state, you'll see that Turlock is in the middle of the darkest portion of this chart, and that is the exceptional drought area, which is the highest drought area you can have. So in this drought, in these drought- So, in this drought, in these drought conditions, and with groundwater pumping by our city, combined with agricultural pumping, the water levels beneath our city keep dropping. The real sad part of this is that here in Turlock, we have used almost 100 million more gallons of water this April than we used last April. This April, we also used 66% more water than the city of Livermore did, and they have a population of 90,000, which is compared to our 75,000. Every person needs to do their part. I want every one of you to check and see how much water you're using. I brought my last six months of bills, my water bills. Hopefully, you get these, or you get it online. This runs from December 15th to June 15th, and in those six months, I used a total of 26,600 gallons of water. How many people use, I mean, many people use that much water in just one month in the summer. And there are households in Turlock that use two, three, and four times that amount of water in just one month in the summer. This is not sustainable. This will not work, and many of you need to reduce your water usage drastically. I worked hard to save my water. I took out all the lawns in my yard, and most of them, and replaced most of them with drought tolerant plants. I do have two tomato plants, one tangelo tree and one redwood tree. The one redwood, redwood tree uses a quarter to a third of all the water I use in the summer. The moral here is, don't plant redwood trees in Turlock. They use way too much water. Turlock needs to put three steps in place to conserve water. First, our city needs to institute an equitable water rate schedule with tiered water rates to foster conservation of our water. Second, our city needs a lawn-to-garden incentive program so that those who choose to reduce the size of their lawns and replace them with drought tolerant gardens are compensated for their water conservation. Third, since we're entering, since we entered another drought cycle, it's important that we hire additional employees in the water department to track our water usage and enforce the state water mandates that are in place or will soon be in place. Sadly, there are still people in Turlock who can't accept reality. Water scarcity in Turlock is reality. There's no genie in a bottle that's going to come out of that bottle and make our water problem disappear. It's a responsibility of every Turlock citizen to conserve water. So, let's all get to work and do this. We're Turlock, and we are the best.
Anyone else who did not fill out a card?
Good evening, Mayor, fellow council members, city manager, city attorney, city clerk. Welcome back. Nice to see you. Lisa McDermott always inspires me. I love listening to her. She loves her job more than anyone, I think should love a job. It is just awesome. We have a great partnership going. I had the opportunity to go and see exhibits, so they had a contest. I think Keith Boggs, myself, and our librarian, Sarah Denton, scored them, and they're now on display over at the library. And Turlock's Rhett Owens had Best of Show, and it was a, it's called Libraries Open Doors for Everyone. Please see it. It's in the community room right now, being shown. So, I just wanted to again thank the mayor, the vice mayor, and Councilman Nazrati for showing up at the groundbreaking yesterday. We did the ground, not the groundbreaking, yeah, the groundbreaking opening, and today was the actual opening of the new and improved Turlock Library, opportunities for teens, young children, and adults alike. My favorite part, there is a community room that will hold about 100 people, so we can have, there's not ever enough space for community type rooms that you can rent for practically nothing. And also, there's a maker space for teens, which is the most exciting part of the whole thing. They have a 3D printer in there. I know they're going to have sewing classes. They have iPads and other things that are available. A couple of big thank yous, friends of the library have raised 1.4 million dollars, a money from Turlock that was going on the same time as Jessica's House fundraising. What a community of givers. It is truly an amazing, amazing city, and that money is, was used for upgrades, furniture upgrades, but they're also going to keep things fresh, meaning upgrades inside of the maker space and the kids area, which I'm really excited about. One other thing, to leave on a little bit of a sour note, I know that I've gotten some texts from folks regarding American Medical Response, AMR, and their response times have been pretty difficult. There's a shortage of paramedics, at least that's what they've told the Board of Supervisors. Mountain Valley EMS Agency is responsible for oversight, but Condit is our member, and he's watching it closely, but the, the Board of Supervisors has been very concerned about the response times because what it's doing is putting more pressure on fire departments who respond to calls, and if they have a paramedic, the paramedic has to stay on scene. So, you're seeing long wait times for the fire departments to be available to go to other medical calls or other fire calls. So, it's, it's very concerning. I would ask you, they've given two presentations, AMR, but I would ask that you maybe consider having them come and explain the situation because it's, you know, I understand the shortage, but the risk associated with it throughout our community, other than the healthcare districts, which is in Oakdale and the West Side, people are actually paying for service, but it's putting a lot of pressure because once an ambulance from the West Side brings someone to Emmanuel Medical Center, they're, they're going to the next call, which may be in Turlock. And, and so, there used to be probably the flip, the inverse, where AMR was helping the healthcare districts, but now it's completely changed. So, very concerning to us, should be very concerning to yourself, as well as the community on response times, and again, to the fire department where the wait has really fallen. I appreciate, because I see the, the wait times, and the mayor's been very good about forwarding anything that, that she has seen or heard. So, keep that in mind, and I'll try and keep you informed after the Mountain Valley, when Supervisor Condit comes back, and let you know exactly what, what are the remediation steps. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Breger?
Yeah, deep sigh. Deep sigh. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and city staff. Way back there. First, I want to send out a couple of thank yous to staff, including our new interim city clerk for coming back to help out, and to Allison for holding down the fort until some help arrived. And I see there's another person there, but I don't know who you are, so thank you for being here and helping. And assuming item 6M is approved, I also want to thank our two police captains who have stepped up and acted as interim police chief since last October. It's been a long time. Okay. Concerning Jamie Ellison and TB on the Turlock Police Department, she was arrested around 2:00 a.m., and at noon on the same day, Turlock Black Lives Matter tweeted about her arrest and a planned protest at the Public Safety Building for 8:00 p.m. that night. And it was at 8:14 p.m., after the protest had started, that the police department posted their press release on their Facebook page. So, as far as I know, it was Turlock Black Lives Matter, not the police department, who let the whole world know that she'd been arrested. For Mr. Bray, is there an update on the possibility of extending the roadwork on Linwood that was discussed at the last council meeting? Another subject, the council handbook was rescinded six months ago. Councilman Nazrati has asked about the status of its replacement several times. The mayor asked two months ago if a chapter per month could be brought to the council for review. So, my question is, what is the status of the work on that? When can we begin to see and review this document? And I would also say that I believe that the new, that in the new handbook, critical elements need to be addressed, such as ex parte communications, as, in particular, as related to quasi judicial hearings, and the rules that apply to such hearings. At the last council meeting, Chief Williams stated that if more overtime was allocated, he could staff the care unit every day instead of one, I'm sorry, he could staff it once a week instead of once every two weeks, if I understood correctly. To me, this seems to be a no-brainer, so I ask what is needed to get this done and get it done ASAP. I also asked the chief if he believes that this unit could be expanded, and if so, what is needed in terms of funding for training, et cetera, to make that happen? I also asked the chief, I've got a lot of questions, if the department could use additional overtime to address the traffic violations throughout the city. People run stop signs, stoplights, cars race up and down our streets, cars and motorcycles with loud mufflers diminish the quality of our life. My question is, would additional overtime allow the police department to address some of these issues like it has, I'm sorry, with the sides, there it goes, like you did with the side shows, okay? If that's possible, I ask the council to address this ASAP. And then concerning COVID, as you may know, RT is the measure of if the number of COVID cases are increasing or decreasing. If RT is above one, the number of cases will increase in the near future. If it's below one or below, the number of cases will decrease in the near future. Stanlows County RT was below one between March 21st and May 22nd, wherein it steadily increased and peaked on July 11th, and has been steadily decreasing, falling to 1.0 yesterday. I think this is good news. This should indicate that the number of cases will decrease fairly rapidly in the near future, which can also be seen in the case rate, which was steadily increasing, but is now flattening out. RT difference differs for each county, with Maced being 1.1, San Joaquin 1.27, LA 1.15, and California as a whole 1.15. The good news is that RT is falling throughout the state. Please pull items 6G and 6I. Thank you. G and I.
Anyone else in the, Mr. Puffer?
Yeah, I'd like to, Robert Puffer, Turlock. I'd like the council to pull items 6M and 6N for discussion, please. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, anybody online?
Yes. Rodriguez.
Okay. Mr. Rodriguez?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councils. Last, last month, on the last Saturday, I attended the coffee with, with the chief, and it was a productive discussion about how the police department works, and also I learned about, thinking too, about public service and how the city runs. And I met other members of the public about the, you know, mental health and homelessness, and I recall the chief Williams wishing that he has two or three mental health workers in his department so that they could attend a mental health crisis situation instead of having to send in police officers. And I raised my hand and asked Chief Williams if he's, if it would be possible to have a Kahoot-style program for Turlock, since we have care as a foundation. And he says possibly yes, and, and since he said he wants to have healthcare workers that is suited for mental health, he's in favor of it. So, we discussed, and I talked about how the program works. Basically, a person's having a mental health problem, they called a dedicated number, instead of having a police officer come, a healthcare worker comes in, and they handle the situation without having to rest. And Chief Williams, he probably has the notes taken about Kahoots, and he's probably learning, so someday it'll be an agenda in the future, or once Modesto has it. And also, on June 22nd, last month, I remember this Breger person who's, who's against the proclamation of Pride Month because he gaslighted the whole public about out of love, opposition out of love, but his remarks about gay rights is disgusting and moral and shameful because his words, the LGBTQ youth are most likely to be rejected by their families, having mental health issues that would lead to depression and ultimately suicide, ending up in the criminal justice system, and his words hurts him a lot. And this is why the youth of Turlock needs to make Turlock more inclusive, more welcoming, progressive, tolerant, and with dignity, respect, and equality, not having Ron Breger pushing his homophobia, his puritanical thinking, laced with white Christian nationalism, because it's disgusting, and this is show that he's a bitter old white privileged boomer, because we're fed up with gaslighting, and also he stalks women, young women who stood up for Jamie Ellison. And this is disgusting, too, because he's, he mocked her mental issues. He mocked another person with downs, with a kid with Down Syndrome and encouraged stalking. And, and since he's a Christian, you probably remember the Pittman High student who's been suspended with dress code. I think he's slut-shaming students who violate dress code, because this is why the patriarchy is, is real. We need to add conservative social values shoved above us and let the youth lead to our direction for our community, so there'll be a tolerant place, and we need to move on. And that's, and also, I don't know what to state, but what I said earlier, having a mental health crisis program in Turlock, we need to have it as soon as possible, and it should be including a future agenda, because Chief Williams approved it. I told him the benefits of having it, that means that a police officer will not have to respond to a mental health crisis. It will save resources, save time, and have, and alleviates the pressure the police officer to respond to those calls, dealing with homeless person with a mental issue or a person having a mental health crisis, and it'll benefit because jails will not be overcrowded, hospitals will not be overcrowded, and it'll not be a burden on, on our finances and costing more money. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next caller?
Next caller is with the last four, it's just 8810.
Ms. Jackson? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council and staff and public. This is Mary Jackson calling. I have some concerns in regards to, I'm, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we're not able to view the meeting tonight on Channel 2, and I don't know if this has been happening regularly or not, and I hope we are still broadcasting on Channel 2, so we can actually get that fixed. And I know some people are still having issues downloading the agenda, but I'd like to finish by saying that I really would like to thank Mr. Bray and the other staff who has been called up to continuously report and get sort of like, looks like these surprise questions, which is usually not the way the city council or mayor is supposed to conduct themselves, in my account or in my recollection. And so, I really appreciate you trying your best to answer these questions, and I would be really cautious with trying to push through when things are supposed to be getting done, considering where we're at now, with the climate, with material costs, with everything else that's been happening in the last year and a half. I'm just really appreciative of the staff who has stayed on and are continuing to do the hard work every day in and day out with all this extra stress and things that really were unaccounted for and unplanned and unprecedented, the word we usually try not to use. But I'm optimistic. We need to be vigilant. We have, our schools are going to open tomorrow. We need to do everything we can to make sure that our schools stay open, and I hope that you, as the city council and the mayor, will be a part of that. Thank you, and have a good night.
Next caller?
Louise Burgess.
Louise Burgess? Go ahead, caller.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I wanted to start it out by, one, thanking you all for allowing me to speak, and, two, to address some concerns that I have as a citizen of Stanislaus. I, one, for one, want to stress how incredibly strange it is that Ron Bridegroom is still speaking about Jamie Ellison and bringing this up. And to me, it feels a little obsessive, a little strange. I also want to address this specifically to the entire community, but Ron Bridegroom especially, about his comments, his homophobic comments. I have some statistics here about the LGBTQ community. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death among young people ages 10 to 24. LGBTQ youth seriously contemplate suicide at almost three times the rate of heterosexual youth. LGBT youth are almost five times as likely to have attempted suicide compared to heterosexual youth. Of all the suicide attempts made by youth, LGBT youth's suicide attempts were almost five times as likely to require medical treatment than those of heterosexual youth. Suicide attempts by LGBT youth and questioning youth are four to six times more likely to result in injury, poisoning, or overdose that requires treatment from a doctor or nurse compared to their straight peers. In a national study, 40% of transgender adults reported having made a suicide attempt. 92% of these individuals reported having attempted suicide before the age of 25. LGBT youth who come from highly rejecting families are 8.4 times as likely to have attempted suicide as LGBT peers who reported no or low levels of family rejection. And there are so many more statistics that I could go on about, but I want to highlight how important it is to raise awareness about LGBT people and LGBT youth specifically. This is why, you know, events such as raising the flag for LGBT people and making these days, you know, an important day, it's important because LGBT people and youth experience high amounts of suffering, mental illness, rejection from their families, houselessness, and many other forms of suffering. It's important to highlight this and really understand this to anyone who takes issue with what I am saying. I am not speaking opinion, I am speaking fact, I am speaking statistics. And that is all I had today. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak.
Next caller?
Mary Jackson, we have an, I'd like to correct the record. That was not Louise Burgess, that was Jupiter.
Jupiter, got it. Okay, we will close the public hearing and move on to motion weaving. And there aren't any. So consent calendar looks to be, we're just going to pull almost every item off, it looks like. So we will pull C. Charles, G. George, I. Ida, M. Mary, and Nora. So with the few that are left, would somebody make a motion?
Motion to approve the amended consent calendar.
Second. Motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Monette?
Yes.
Mayor Googleblatt?
Yes. Passes 5-0, those pass 5-0, moving on to item C. Charles. Would you like to start with your question, Vice Mayor? So that we can...
I will. I will try to make this quick.
Question?
Question. What was the reason that we went 49% over budget from the staff report of June 23rd, 2020, on the construction engineering survey materials testing? That was the thing that pushed us over budget because the actual contractor was under budget even with the two change orders, 20%. So we're over 19% because of our staff stuff.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have those numbers in front of me. It's something that I could look into.
Yeah, if you could just look into it. And we seem to always go over on our handicap ramps, too. Although, this contractor did us a huge blessing and came in so far under our engineers' estimate, it surprised me. And even with the two change orders, he's still 20% over, so, I mean, under.
Correct, yeah. The bids came in great on this project.
Right, so I'm just wondering why our, the things that we can control went so far over budget that pushed us over. If we do this in one of the items coming up, the $31 million contract we have, that's going to push us over $6 million. So I'm just, I'm very cognizant of change orders, so if you could just look that up for me and you can email it to me, that would be great.
I will, I will. I do know we do have some changes out there in the field. Anytime you're building new infrastructure and tying into existing infrastructure, it always poses some challenges. I know that happened out there. The specifics and the numbers, I don't know, but I can dive into that and let you know.
Any questions for Mr. Bray? I open it to the public. Anyone in this room wish to question this? Anyone online? No? All right, closing public participation, item C. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Monette?
Yes.
Mayor Googleblatt?
Yes, passes 5-0, thank you, Mr. Bray. Item G. George is approving an agreement between the Stanislaus County Office of Education, the City of Turlock, and the TUSD, authorizing acceptance of an allocation of funds and execution of a grant agreement to implement the after-school education and safety. Let me open it to the public, one of the people in the room. Mr. Bridegroom, can you go ahead and ask your question, and then we'll go backwards and see if there's something we can answer.
Thank you. It's actually more of a statement or an idea?
You can do that. These guys can't.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so it sounds like a good program. And I haven't talked to either of the two council members who I'm going to mention, but both council members, Nasrati and Larson, have asked several times about using the quarter percent collected from cannabis sales to get a drug education program going. And it sounds like that could kind of fit into what we're talking about here. And with schools starting again, it seems like a good time to work on that. So if you don't mind the suggestion, I would propose that you create an ad hoc committee with the two council members, Nasrati and Larson, and, if they're willing. They can work with Turlock Unified School District, perhaps the lady who, from the county, who contacted me about an anti-vamping program. And I don't know if I ever sent you that information. So if I haven't, I need to send you that information, okay? And then the Turlock Journal had a article about Protocol Sons and Daughters and their Rise Up Youth Drug Prevention and Education Program. So those are just some ideas of people you could work with, and they can come up with some ideas, bring it back to the council, and go from there. And might be a way of getting this going. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room wishing to speak to this item? Anyone online? All right, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to council.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for G. George. Call the clerk.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Monette?
Yes.
Mayor Googleblatt?
Yes, passes 5-0, thank you. Did you, Mr. Bridegroom, did you ask for I. Ida also?
Yes, he did.
All right, would you go ahead and come on up here real quick, sir, and tell us what the question is? This agreement with White Brenner LLP to extend the term providing special counsel legal services to the city. You might want to sit closer.
So again, it's comments, and a question or two. Okay, so originally, back in May, I think it was, we were told that it was, this agreement was for 90 days to clear up some work that they had started, and now you're going to extend it for a total of a year, okay? What is going on at the city that requires so much legal work? And then I have some difficulties with this law firm. I believe there have been multiple instances where the quality of their legal work was not up to the standards of what we should expect. For example, the development agreements for the cannabis work, referred to as DAs. It is clearly stated in Turlock Municipal Code and State Code that DAs are about a specific property. And that notification of the planning commission and city council meetings concerning the development agreement must be sent out via mail to all property owners within a certain distance of the property. Since the city attorney had done this before for multiple cities, one would think that his firm would know how to properly do this, okay? However, the legally required notifications were not done. It also appears that the planning commission and city council were not properly informed of exactly what they were approving, nor of the proper time for them to consider public input. It was only after a member of the public pointed out to the mayor and city manager what Turlock Municipal Code and State Law requires that the city attorney modified the procedure. Also, I'll talk about a complaint that I filed seven months ago, where I specifically quoted from the guiding resolution to help make things clear, like the city manager did in item 10A. I kind of got a laugh out of that when I, a chuckle when I saw that. So I included a screenshot with the applicable passage underlined in red ink and the name of the document outlined in, by a red box. Despite this, Mr. White, in his legal analysis, incorrectly referred to the council handbook, which had been rescinded, instead of the applicable and quoted document, and to the severity code, which was not applicable, and which I had not mentioned. And on that basis, dismissed the complaint. In my opinion, this shows a lack of attention to simple details, which any lawyer would be, I think should be embarrassed by this. I could also talk about quasi-judicial hearings, how the rules were not followed there, and how that opened up the city and the council members to potential lawsuits. And this is something that I believe is one of the reasons why you have a city attorney, to protect the city, to make sure that they follow the legally correct procedures. So in the end, I guess you want to reward Mr. White and his law firm with even more of our monies. I sure hope you have someone closely reviewing his work. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone online? Closing the public hearing. Mr. Petralakis, did you have anything to say, sir?
Well, first, Mayor, I want the record to show due to kind of a complicated set of facts where I was, I was employed by Mr. White's firm on behalf of a number of cities in Stanislaus County. I've actually, I'm not sure whether I've got a conflict or not, but I've recused myself from the contractual matter, so I haven't been involved in it. I'm happy to answer. The first question was, what is going on at the city hall, the city that requires so much legal work? So I've got, I've got many answers to that, but I don't know if they're appropriate for tonight. I'll take it up with Mr. Bridegroom.
You only get five minutes, sir.
Who was kind enough not to mention that I rescheduled on him twice in trying to address his seven months ago complaint that he has not found satisfaction with yet. And he has not found it from me either yet, so I apologize, Mr. Bridegroom. And I'll answer anything else that is...
Yes.
Mr. Petralakis?
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Petralakis, I could have swore I read this contract was a 90-day extension. Mr. Bridegroom just said it's a one-year extension?
I don't have any idea because I haven't been involved in it, so I don't, I don't...
It's a one-year?
Because we were doing a 90-day the first time.
Right, we did a 90-day, I thought we were doing another 90-day. June 30th. Yep, it sure does.
Any other questions or comments?
Do we, so right now, Mr. Petralakis, you are recusing yourself from the contract specifically with Mr. White. Are you able to, with your concern about potential conflicts of interest, are you able to oversee the work that he's providing for the city?
Yeah, the work is not the issue, it's the contracting itself where the concern is.
Do we, do we have an estimate of total billable hours through the first 90 days with the firm through, from now dating back?
Franco's got the exact number.
I actually asked that of staff. Maze was $4,377. I believe the three months that you're questioning was about $10,000.
Yeah, from my perspective, the work itself has been a combination of some of the carryover work that you've heard, and also there are situations when you need, I call it conflict council. Like this matter itself, there are situations where I have clients doing business with the city, so I can't, you know, I can't, it's not appropriate for me to do the work. So some, a little bit of it has been that. So I think it's that kind of thing that I would expect, the work itself, not about the contract.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a second motion to approve with a 90-day timeframe versus one-year timeframe. So you have two motions on the table.
Do we have a second for either?
I'll second the 90-day.
Why don't you propose an amendment to the motion and have the maker of the motion accept the amendment?
So proposed.
I accept the amendment.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we have a motion and a second for a 90-day extension. Click on the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Monette?
Yes.
Mayor Googleblatt?
Yes, passes 5-0, thank you. Item M. Mary, adopting resolution to employ CalPERS annuitant interim chief of police pursuant to CalPERS requirements. Mr. Puffer, you asked for that, sir? Can you come up here, please? I'll open that to the public.
My first question is, who do we try to employ?
Okay. Any other questions?
Why that person and why the, why? It just seems to me that it's been $150,000 for nothing. You already have to interim people who have been doing the job. They seem to have been doing a pretty good job, and there's no reason to apply another person. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this? Anyone online? Close the public hearing, bring it back for conversation. Would you speak to that, Ms. Eddy?
So who we're trying to employ was the first question. We are requesting that Gary Hampton come back as the interim police chief while we complete a recruitment to hire a police chief. And then I...
Then it was why and why?
We have two interns. Why the interns, not continuing?
So when you go out and hire an executive search firm, most all of them will tell you that you never want to have an interim sitting in a position when you're trying to recruit for that position. There would be no reason to have a search firm if that was the case because any applicant that would look at that and see that the interim person was applying for the position wouldn't apply for the job. So it'd just be a waste of time. And why are we having an executive search? We would do that because we want to afford this city the opportunity to get the best candidate. It may be internal, it may be external, but that's the right thing to do.
Motion to approve item M.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Motion by Councilmember Moniz and Vice Mayor Wood second.
I had other questions for city staff before we take a vote. Ms. Eddy, so is there an intention to also fill in the other interim positions that we have that are currently held by interim directors? Or is this the only one that we are hiring somebody that's been retired to come back?
Sure. No, this is not the only one. As you can see, Kelly Weaver is here as the, as a retired annuitant, as the interim city clerk. Julie Burke is here as a retired annuitant, as the interim finance director. And our intention is to be as consistent as we can and do the same for all of the other positions. And you will actually see that in the staff report, that the search firm that we're requesting a council approve, Cooperative Personnel Services, we've listed all of those positions in that staff report.
So in that staff report, it shows the other positions that we are trying to fill with retired annuitants for the search process? Is that what I'm understanding? This is just adding, putting a retirement, a retired annuitant into a position that we're trying to hire. Yes, I understand that we have other retired annuitants here, there. Those are positions that we did not have anybody, well, we did have people from internally that were ready to step into that role. So there were definitely holes that needed to be, that we appreciate are being filled by very, very capable individuals. But my fear is that if we're doing this for just this position that is being listed for recruitment, but we aren't doing it for the other positions that had long-term interims, that doesn't seem very fair, I believe. So that's my concern, that you're saying in the staff report, there is a, we're asking the firm to help us fill with retired annuitants? Or am I misunderstanding?
No, you're misunderstanding. I'm sorry. Let me make it clear. So we are bringing in people to fill these positions on an interim basis while the search firm finds permanent staff. We've, this is our third retired annuitant. And, did I answer your question?
No, you did. You did.
So I, for the sake of fairness, I would, I would want to amend the motion to approve all, the next retired annuitants all at one time for the other positions that are filled with interims. So we don't have some of them being filled with current interims from our current staff and others not being filled with interims from our current staff, if possible.
I don't understand what you're asking. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense.
It does. So all of the retired annuitants that we would want to fill in all of the positions to be here.
The annuitant positions, you don't just, like, you have to go through a process, right? And some are going to take longer than others. Clearly, Mr. Hampton has a huge background already done because of all of his past. There's other people that she's probably going to vet, but it takes longer than just that. We have backgrounds, we have things of that nature.
Right.
Pers has to okay it.
Yes.
So you can't just lump them all in together. But at the same time, you're trying to set, our next city manager should get to choose all these people.
Right.
And know what their weaknesses and their strengths are. And if, you know, it should be inside, primarily that'll, they may like them.
Right.
And if not, then that was a fault of ours. Our succession planning didn't work.
Sure.
But we want to set up our next city manager to choose the next people and not be limited by just, okay, this is what you're, this never happens in any city manager, to get the opportunity to choose who their staff should be.
Right. And I totally agree with that. I'm just, my issue is, is that we are, there's going to be some that are currently filled with current staff interims, and there's some that it will not be. And that's my issue. If we could, even though some are already through the vetting process, Hampton's ready to go, that's fantastic. If we can hold off on putting them all into these current interim positions, the retired annuitants, if we're able to get them for the other positions like engineer, like municipal services, the ones that have current staff, that would seem more fair of an opportunity to have a level playing field with all the other staff. That's my, that would be my.
Mr. Petralakis?
I just wanted to get clarity on this because I know more about this issue than I ever thought I would want to. So you're saying if the city manager wants to ensure this level playing field by not having any current staff being in the interim position?
Right.
If she does that in the future, which I think she's maybe intending to, I don't know for sure, that you want to see it all at once? Is that the point? You want to see them, yeah?
Bring all of them on at one time?
And I think that's...
Is that what you're...
I understand that that wouldn't be possible, but in terms of all of them being completed, like, we have them all lined up to be approved at the city council. I'm sure that some processes would take longer, but that's still the point, is to get them all filled before we start hiring them, right? So at some, at some point, we still have to have all of them lined up.
But how do we coordinate that with the recruitment processes that we've...
They'd have to run them all simultaneous.
You know, so...
Are you retired annuitants?
No.
No, the recruitment process.
I understand the recruitment process. I think that's, I think I'm being misunderstood. I think that we need to have all of the retired annuitants be lined up in these positions before we start with the recruiting process, if that's really the intention, to have retired annuitants that have no intention of applying for the job. That would make sense to have them all lined up in those positions before we take on the hiring process.
How do we know it's going to be a retired annuitant every time and not just a filler?
Let me say that again, because my mic wasn't on. I apologize. How do we know, how is she supposed to know? I mean, maybe you have a crystal ball in your pocket, that it's going to be a retired annuitant every time, and it's not just a filler applying for the position?
That's exact, yes.
And I think the difference, this action on this item 6M, as in mother, is a kind of a CalPERS rule that we're fulfilling. So, I mean, that is a good point, which is, so that only needs to happen if the new interim person is a retiree. Because I can't say the A-word. I can't say CalPERS A.
A new attendant.
I can't say, it doesn't come out of my mouth. So if it's, if it's not, if it's somebody else, you know, who does this...
Which is fine.
Then it doesn't, it doesn't have to come to council. So that would be, that would be the difference. And I think, I think, so, is that getting closer to you?
No, that's fine. It doesn't have to be retired annuitant.
Yeah, right.
I think the point is to ensure that the person that could possibly be applying for the job is not sitting in that seat at the time.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're actually saying the same thing as the interim city manager, which is to ensure that everyone has an equal opportunity to apply without an incumbent current staff member. You know, you want those people in place before the recruiting process.
Right.
Goes too far down the line.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Does that, that makes sense, I think.
No. I was just going to...
Well, I also think it's difficult if you have the possibility of two people in the department that might be applying for that position, and you have one of those two people sitting in that position. It's, that's not fair.
Yeah, you two agree on that.
Right. Yeah, we agree.
Counselor.
So if I understand correctly, you would like to see us move forward with a uniform policy for the entire executive recruitment, executive recruitment where, but ensuring that all executive recruitments do not have an applicant in the position, that we go through the process of either identifying a retired annuitant or placing another external temporary stopgap to take us through recruitment.
Well, I mean...
Are we going to, can you assure that we'll be able to do that for all of the positions?
Can I assure it? No. I don't think, Councilmember, I can assure it. But that's, that is our goal, and that is the way that, it's the fairest way. But if that's the case, I suppose what I don't understand is, why are we having a search firm? We're wasting our money.
No, no, you're all, you're, you're, no, no, they're agreeing with the goal.
So it's no, it's no secret to my longer-term colleagues that, that I too actually have the opinion that we want to give the best chance for the cream to rice. And again, I'm going to go back to succession planning. I've been standing here telling everybody for 12 and a half years, we've got to help our leaders become even better leaders. So if you're asking for, in the future, we should have a statement saying, if you want this job at any time, then we need some sort of resolution saying that you may not, no internal person can be in the seat when the position is open. Then, then we can work through that. But right now, all we're doing is an annuitant for just Mr. Hampton with the interim chief of police.
So, Madam Clerk, I have a motion on the table with a second. I reject any amendments to that. With all due respect to my colleague, if she would like to put a second motion up on the table, she can.
It's, what, the problem is going to be, and I think Mr. Petralakis will agree with this, the only thing that's on our agenda that we can, the only thing we can vote on is 6M.
Well, I think what, you know, I, yes, but I think what's confusing a little bit is 6N, as in night, which is, which is the recruitment firm for all the directors, right? So I think, I think that's, no, I know, but I think that's, that's coloring the discussion here, right? And I think maybe, I mean, if I've understood what the interim city managers tried to educate me on, I think it's going to work out the way you want it to by the staging of the recruitments, basically, right? So I think that, I think actually everyone's saying, it's one of those situations where I think actually everyone has expressed the same goal, and, and I would encourage us to embrace that goal and move on with it, maybe, if I could.
Call the roll, please.
Be so bold.
Councilmember Larson?
We already did. Yes, we already did it.
We closed.
We, no, sir, we opened it up, we asked everybody, and we're moving along here. This, we're at a motion and a second, so I apologize, but you, go ahead.
Councilmember Larson?
No.
Councilmember Ms. Roby?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Boobla?
Yes, it passes 4-1. Moving on to item N Nora, I believe, Mr. Puffer, this is yours, authorizing interim city manager to enter an agreement with CPS HR Consulting for Recruitment Services related to the vacant position, the city manager, chief of police, fire chief, municipal service director, and development service director in an amount not to exceed $100,000. Your question, sir?
My question there was, it was my understanding that we sent out a request for proposals to several firms and got zero responses. My question is, how did we get CPS HR to come on board? I mean, did we contact them? And if we contacted them, did we contact anybody else? What was the reason for picking that? Secondly, you just guys just hired an annuitant with 960 hours of working work to start. And probably by the time you finally get a city manager who the mayor said she wanted to have come in here and be able to pick and choose his chief of police...
For her.
Mr. Hampton has already used up his hours.
I hope not.
So, yeah, because it's going to take six months before you get a city manager in there.
No way.
Mr. Hampton will have used up all his hours. You won't have, you'll be back to an interim chief of police at that time. But, that was my question, was on CPS HR.
Anyone else wishing to ask a question in this room? Anyone online? Closing the public hearing, bring it back to Ms. Eddy, why CPS?
So, we chose CPS because, or we are recommending CPS because, you're correct, we did not receive a response. So we got no one that was interested in conducting all of the recruitments that we have available. The municipal code allows us, after that, to go out and contact a recruiter and work with them and bring that to the council for approval. We chose CPS because we have a very strong working relationship with them. They've gotten a lot of work done for us in a very timely fashion. You can ask any of the directors sitting beside, right over here. Recruitments, just gone through them and helped dramatically. So that's why we chose to work with CPS. You're welcome. They did. They did.
So her question was, didn't they give us a deal for the package of $100,000 for all five positions, which is pretty incredible?
Typically, recruitment is $25,000 to $30,000 a recruitment. But because we have a working relationship with them, they're doing all five for $100,000.
And it's no surprise to California that a lot of people are hitting their retirement date and moving on. So it makes it more difficult to get all the top positions. I, no way we're going to wait six months to get a city manager. That is not going to happen. We sign with these people, put it out for 30 days, and for who wants to be city manager here, do the interview process and move on and start our leadership group fast. Six months is not, not even an option. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I had this discussion with our city manager and city clerk just yesterday, I believe it was. We, we actually discussed if this firm brings in or we get recruits within so many days that we would have the ability to shut down the recruitment because we had applications from qualified personnel as soon as, as soon as we thought was necessary. So we've already spoken about this, and I'm sure Ms. Eddy can get a little further on. We want the city manager in as soon as possible, stretching it out until October. The end of October just isn't going to work. We all know that. So...
Do you have a motion?
She's, she's fully aware of it. I, so I am motion to approve, can say calendar number in.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Larson?
Can I confirm that we did open it up for the callers? Because I know we brought Bob in, but we did open it up for the online caller.
There was nobody at the time that had it closed. There was one.
Got this.
Yes.
I'm sorry, everybody?
We'll go, yes, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ms. Roby?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Boobla?
Yes, passes 5-0. Moving on to final readings, none. Public hearings, none. Action item 9A, request to award bid and improvement of agreement in amount of a lot of money, $31 million. Oh, I was going to say Mr. Brown, but you've got Mr. Feder. All right.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you is a number of motions to your request approval for construction-related agreements for city project number 18-69, surface water distribution system improvements. On the screen are the number of, are the various motions. I'm not going to read each one individually, but we'll step through them one by one. Summarizing the purpose of this project, the purpose is to bring up to 10 million gallons of treated surface water supply per day to the city of Turlock, in concert with SRWA project that is currently ongoing. The first piece of that puzzle was the construction of the SRWA wet well constructed approximately two years ago. Currently, Jacobs Construction is building the SRWA water treatment plant near the Twalbim River. The next piece is the SRWA pipeline to Turlock, bringing treated surface water. And finally, this project are the Turlock local facilities required to convey, distribute, and integrate the new surface water supply into the city's distribution system. The image on the screen right now is the overview of the SRWA and city project. The water treatment plant is located there in the top center of the screen. The blue line indicates the Seres Pipeline, the finished surface water pipeline to Seres. The green line indicates the finished pipeline to Turlock. Down in the bottom right is the terminal tank and booster pump station site. And then the smaller, kind of grayish-blue lines are the city's local pipelines connecting to the existing distribution system. This is a close-up view of the city's project on the northeast side of town, showing the terminal tank reservoir site at 3,500 North Quincy Road, and a number of various pipelines ranging from 16-inch in diameter to 54-inch in diameter, which will provide the new treated surface water supply and integrate it into the city's system at three distinct connection points, one on Christopherson, one on Montavista, and another at Quincy near Sebastian. On the right side of the screen is just an overview of the project's schedule as a whole. August 10th, today, council's requested to approve agreements related to construction. In September, near the end of September or early October, we anticipate construction beginning, and an 18-month construction period would result in completion of construction around March 2023 and the beginning of commissioning of that new supply, with commissioning ending around... beginning, and an 18-month construction period would result in completion of construction around March 2023 and the beginning of commissioning of that new supply, with commissioning ending around September of 2023. These are the project components of the project. 12,000 lineal feet of pipelines up to 54 inches in diameter, a 40-foot tall concrete tank with 2.3 million gallons of water storage, a booster pump station housed in a building to convey 10 million gallons per day of treated surface water from SRWA to the city's distribution system, a surge tank to prevent damage to city facilities, emergency diesel fire generator to provide power to the pump station in case of electrical outage, an overflow retention basin for storage of an entire tank volume plus storm drain runoff for tank maintenance purposes, and the three pressure-reducing valves at the connection points to the city's system. This is just another image of the, the pipelines and the tank site. The image on the right shows that a portion of this project is constructed within Stanislaus County, they're in purple, and the rest within the city of Turlock. The image on the screen at this time is a site plan of the terminal tank site with various features identified, from flow meters to vaults, control valves. One storage tank is contemplated for construction with this project, with space on-site for another future tank as needed for the city's system. The pump station building there in the center of the screen and the storm drain detention basin on the southern portion. This image shows the, well, it's been oriented so that north is facing to the right, but it shows that, you know, the, the majority of the development of the parcel is nearest Quincy Road, and there are roughly 11.1 acres that would remain undeveloped at the end of this project that could be used for other city, city needs as, city functions as needed. The next several slides just show various features, profile views, exploded views of some of the components of the project, this being the 2.3 million gallon concrete storage tank. At its apex, the dome is about 40 feet tall, it's 125 feet in diameter. It's a considerable-sized tank, this would be the largest tank within the city. We currently have three other water storage tanks, each with 1 million gallons of capacity. This is a 3D model view, solid outline and transparent of that concrete storage tank. This is an exploded view of the 3D model for the pump station building. It's a rather large building with several important components. In the center, we see three pumps that are capable of pumping up to 14 million gallons per day. The SRWA project will provide up to 10 million gallons per day at the outset, though there are opportunities to potentially increase that up to 12 or so, depending on whether we can get the proper approvals for some of the treatment facilities at the site. There is room within the pump station building for additional pumps should the additional phase, phase two, to increase capacity be, be approved. We don't have a timeline exactly for when phase two would take place, and that's dependent on a number of factors, from water rights to funding and, and so on. But the room is there within the building, the pipes are sized to accommodate the, the larger increased flow at that future time. There's a storage room, control room, SRWA control room, electrical room, and then you can see the generator and the surge tanks. This is just a transparent view showing the HVAC ducting, some of the below-grade piping that you could not see previously, including electrical ducting. This is a typical PRV vault located again at three different locations at the connection points, includes a pressure-reducing valve which will regulate pressure as it enters the city's system. So the first motion that we'll be discussing is the approval of agreement in amount of 31,894,398 with Mountain Cascade of Livermore, California for construction of the project. Bids were due on July 15th. The original engineer's estimate was 37.3 million dollars. The city received six bid proposals. The low bidder was identified to be Mountain Cascade with a base bid of just over 32.5 million dollars, as indicated in the table. We had one bidder whose bid was considered non-responsive as they did not complete a couple of the forms, but the low bid, Mountain Cascade, was reviewed and it, and they met the requirements for qualifications and bid responsiveness. And grateful to receive, Mountain Cascade's quote, as you can see, they were significantly lower, and they're, they're happy to get started on the project and are, and are, and are ready, and we are grateful again for their, for their bid. The next slide summarizes a various, three various bid alternates that were included with the contract documents. These were each identified as deductive alternates so that that base bid amount of 32.5 and change would be reduced should the city decide to accept any number of these bid alternates. Bid alternate A was for elimination of future switchgear for the pump station expansion, and currently in the base bid of the project, there's adequate electrical switchgear within the electrical room for the future expansion of phase two, and that would allow for pumping up to 30 million gallons per day, as opposed to 10 million gallons per day that this phase one would include. At the bid alternate price of 111,000 dollars, as a deduct, based on the, the complexity, the amount, the type of equipment that's needed, staff recommends rejecting the bid alternate A and constructing the entirety of the switchgear. This will allow the city to, to reduce the complexity of trying to add this very specialty equipment at a later date. Material prices always go up, and we know that it's, it's likely just a matter of time before it will be needed, and the cost savings of 111,000 dollars really pales in comparison with the, with the cost to add at a later date to make sure manufacturer and model families work together for such a complicated piece of electrical material. Bid alternate B is for the elimination of the retention basin pump station, 15-inch storm drain pipeline, storm drain manholes and associated work. And the staff does recommend approval of bid alternate B, which would result in a deduction of 660,260. These components would allow the city to more quickly empty the overflow retention basin located on the southern half of the site. We know that we'll have tank maintenance from time to time, the tank will need to be drained, inspected, cleaned, and other things may need to happen to take it offline. And the original purpose again was to quickly move that, move that flow from overflow retention basin to the city's system and its considerable amount of infrastructure. We looked at the, the percolation rates that are naturally occurring on-site, and it's estimated that it will take about 10 days to completely drain the, the volume from the percolation basin just naturally. And so in consultation with municipal services, we felt that the 10 days was adequate and that, that operational flexibility that would be included by, by rejecting the alternate wasn't, wasn't great enough and that, that the 10 days is definitely doable. In addition, with purchasing of the entire 19-acre property, there's a potential to temporarily bypass flow to the land just to the, the east, which would also improve the, the discharge time and the emptying time. So again, staff's recommendation is to accept bid alternate B. Bid alternate C is for eliminating phase two commissioning or temporary pumping to the distribution system and associated work. After the project is constructed, there'll be two phases, there currently in the base bid are two phases of commissioning. The first one is to pump the, the fluid in a loop from the tank through the pump station and back through the tank to make sure that the pump station's operating properly, that there are no leaks, to do a hydraulic test loop essentially. Then after that, the phase two commissioning would slowly ramp up the flow into the distribution system, starting at approximately 0.7 MGD or a million gallons per day, up to about 3.9 MGD over about a month period, stepping up flow one week at a time to get to that 4 MGD flow. The large pumps that are installed in the pump station, right, as part of the base bid, would not allow us to meet that lower flow. Staff and council approved an agreement with Confluence Engineering Group. They studied the integration of new surface water supply with the existing groundwater supply, and their recommendation is to avoid discolored water events and this interaction of the two chemistries between the biofilm on the existing pipes and this new surface water supply. Their recommendation was to slowly step up the flow into the city's system. So in order to meet the intent of their recommendations, phase two commissioning is a part of the scope with the base bid, and staff recommends that the base bid be rejected or that phase two commissioning remain a function and a, a facet of this construction project. There are, there's precedent for other cities and when introducing new supply that there are discolored water events, and we, their recommendation would be consistent with Confluence to minimize those events. That concludes the first motion, and at the end, if there's any questions, of course, we'll be happy to answer them. But moving on to the second motion, this would, this is for the approval of a procurement agreement for purchase of pumps, electrical motor, electrical motors and variable frequency drives with Patterson Pump Company in the amount of 832,985. The pumps, motors, and variable frequency drives are on the critical path of project completion, and as is evident in the construction world, material price, material prices and material procurement have been very difficult over the last little bit, and it's estimated to continue along that, along that path where it's, takes a little bit longer to get material. And knowing this and understanding the schedule importance, on May 25th, council did approve the sole source procurement of the pumps and motors for resolution 2021-091, which would allow the city to obtain a bid from the only authorized dealer of the pumps, motors, and VFDs to, to expedite and also to streamline and become, match existing equipment to decrease maintenance costs. The other three tank and pump station sites within the city use Patterson pumps, and staff is familiar with them, and it's, it's much more cost-effective to, to utilize pumps from a similar manufacturer. So staff did advertise that request for bid. Patterson Pump did respond in the amount of 832,985, which was in line with estimates that the engineering firm Corolla Engineers had, had put together. So the recommendation again would be to approve that purchase. The third motion is for approval of a purchase and sale agreement with Good Shepherd Lutheran Church for property located at 3,500 North Quincy Road. City staff has been working with the owner of the property for many years to work on this acquisition, and the property owner has agreed to the terms that the council has previously discussed for the acquisition of the entire 19.09 acre parcel. This is the parcel that the terminal tank site would be located at, and the bullets here list the, list those terms, the 1 million dollar purchase price, payment of 5,000 dollars towards independent appraisal company that the church, the owner retained, and payment of property taxes back to November 1st, 2020, which are estimated to be less than 5,000 dollars. The next motion is approval of an amendment with amendment number six to the agreement with Corolla Engineers of Walnut Creek in the amount of 1,315,261 for engineering services during construction. The table on the screen shows the agreement history. Since 2018, Corolla Engineers has been providing services on the project, back to preliminary design and then finalizing design, and then a number of other tasks that are listed here along with water smart grant applications, long-lead equipment procurement support, and developing the request for bid for the pumps, motors, and VFDs that I just talked about, shifting design improvements to the west to decrease construction costs and shorten pipe lengths, and also to develop SCADA standards and develop SCADA programming implementation to move to a new state-of-the-art SCADA platform. So what are engineering services during construction? They are services used to assure that the project plans and specifications are applied during construction and are interpreted correctly to meet the design intent. Four volumes of contract documents were developed by the design engineer, Corolla Engineers. It amounts to over 2,000 pages of specifications for the construction project and 213 full-size plan sheets. It's a significant project and a, and a significant design effort, and so these engineering services during construction allow the contractor and the engineer to work together to make sure that design intent is maintained. So just bulleted out here on this slide are the various tasks that ESTC or engineering services during construction entail. It includes reviewing and responding to construction, excuse me, construction contractor's submittals, requests for information, and proposed change orders. It also includes preparing work change directives, design clarifications, attending construction progress meetings, which will be held weekly, leading internal project progress meetings with city staff and the construction manager. And the fee estimate is inclusive of 4,442 hours of Corolla Engineers' time and approximately 1,000 hours of subconsultant, subconsultant time to support the project for its, for its duration, which is 18 months plus six months of commissioning. And finally, the final motion that council's requested to act on is approval of an agreement with West Yost Associates of Davis, California in the amount of 2,181,055 for construction management services. So construction management includes oversight of the contractor's work to assure that the project is built according to the project drawings and specifications, and we just talked about what this is. It's, it's a significant amount of, of design effort, so these are the eyes and ears of the city in the field, inspecting the contractor's work and assuring quality on the project. These bullets listed are those items that are inclusive of this contract. It includes full-time inspection of the work, structural observation, weekly construction progress meetings, tracking contract time, a public outreach component, labor compliance services, construction progress reporting, materials testing, construction schedule review, maintaining project records, documenting, reviewing, and recommending approval of progress payments and change order items, and performing final project inspection and acceptance. So the process for this, this procurement, in June 2021, staff advertised RFP with the following evaluation criteria. Qualifications, competence, abilities, and knowledge of the construction management team, experience to provide the specified services, the record of the consultant accomplishing similar work within budget, completeness of proposal, financial responsibility, and consultant fees in so much as they are fair and reasonable for the services rendered. The city received three proposals by the submittal deadline, which was June 30th. These are the three firms that were, that responded to the RFP, Corolla Engineers, Infere Construction Management, and West Yost Associates. The city evaluation panel consisted of Carl Brown, Utilities Manager, myself, Stephen Fremming, Principal Civil Engineer, and I have a typo here, it was actually Randy Jones, Associate Engineer, rather than Adam Hutchings. And interviews were held with all firms on July 20th. West Yost Associates was determined to be the highest-ranking firm by the panel. In the proposal interview, they demonstrated a good understanding of the needs and challenges of the project, technical expertise and knowledge, effective construction management techniques, leveraging technology, a team-oriented approach to resolve issues as they arise, an ability to effectively communicate status and concerns to the contractor and stakeholders, adequate and relevant experience, including CM services on the North Valley Regional Recycled Water Program Turlock Component, recently completed in 2020, and a well-qualified, experienced internal team as well as subconsultants. Their fee estimate includes 8,662 hours of West Yost's time and approximately 1,400 hours of subconsultant time to provide services for the 18 months of active construction, followed by six months of commissioning and startup activities. It was mentioned earlier, but there is a labor, excuse me, a public outreach component of these services. This is a Google Street View image of North Quincy Road within city limits, showing a traditional two-lane collector street, and just with shading indicating kind of the level of construction that will be happening in this residential neighborhood. On the left side of the screen, there will be a trench for a 42-inch diameter water pipe ranging from eight to 15 feet in depth, will take most of that lane up, and then after backfilling is complete, and the entire road will be grinded and overlaid. So there'll be significant impacts to the public, people getting in and out of driveways, deliveries, emergency services. So the CM contract includes a public outreach program, including mail flyers, door hangers, email blasts, and a project hotline phone number to make sure that the residents are, are well aware of what's going to be happening in their neighborhood. And again, just summarizing, this is the final piece of the puzzle to bring the 10 million gallons of treated surface water. to bring the 10 million gallons of treated surface water per Phase One of the program to the city of Turlock. And the real purpose is, of course, you know, that, that treated drinking water and diversifying Turlock's water portfolio. And this is just the summary again of the motions recommended for approval. And that concludes my presentation. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Fremming?
On that last piece there for the Quincy trenching, do you know how long the road, the road network's going to be interrupted?
Not precisely until we get the contractor's schedule. But there will be two separate time periods where there'll be traffic impacts. Number one, when they're trenching for the actual pipeline. They'll backfill that pipeline and have a, a surface material that would be drivable. And then at the end of the project, when all the trenching is complete, they'll go through and do all the paving at one time. So there'll be two separate, you know, disruptions to the normal traffic flow. Again, I can't say with certainty, but the pipeline installation does move pretty quick once they hit kind of their rhythm. They can install up to, I don't know, I'm just guessing, those pipeline contractors who may be listening will think that I'm crazy, but maybe 500 feet per day is a, is a reasonable number that they'll be able to lay pipe and backfill. So it should be pretty short, you know, affecting one resident. However, the street as a whole will be, you know, kind of out of commission for a while. There'll be detours in place during construction, so.
Other questions for Mr. Fremming?
Yes.
Just one, thank you for that wonderful presentation. Back to the first motion on the tank maintenance. Is that something that our own city employees can do, or is it going to have to go outside? I'm just looking at future costs down the road.
It's a great question. Need to defer to Carl Brown on that one.
I know you weren't going to get off the hook that easy tonight, Mr. Brown.
Phone a friend.
Yeah, that maintenance is something that can be taken care of internally. We have three tank sites currently, and we maintain all of those. Inspection will be required from time to time. That will be a third party. That cost is, for that size, probably about $5,000 for every three years.
Carl Brown with the bonus tonight. Our own employees can do it, that's awesome.
Question?
Yeah, just reiterating, we expected this contract for the Mountain Cascade to be the upwards of 37 million, and they came in at 31 million, so we actually saved approximately $6 million. Yes, for our rate, for our ratepayers, we saved money for our ratepayers.
Yeah, Mountain Cascade really did us a solid, for sure. So 37.3 was the engineer's estimate, and, you know, their recommended approval amount is just shy of 32 million. So they are mobilized contractor, they are the current contractor for the SRWA project, so they had a competitive advantage of having already been, you know, working in the site. We expected them to be very competitive, and they were.
That was a blessing, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, let's open it to the public. Anyone in this room wishing, Mr. Treeweiler? You going to talk about liquids or solids?
I just want to thank you for your great presentation. Described everything very clearly, all the work that you've put into this, you and Mr. Brown have put into this. It looks very good, and thank you again for the description, all the diagrams you presented, and good project, thank you.
Anyone else in this room? Mr. Puffer and then Mr. Breckrum.
Sorry, I missed most of your presentation, and we probably already covered this. With the $31 million bid, when, when was it? When did they submit that? I mean, does that include, or is that with the present inflation on building materials that we're experiencing right now, is this 31 include that? And if not, I mean, is it possible that they'd have to come in for change orders as construction continues because the price of materials keeps going up? Thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Breckrum? We'll get you at the end to answer those, Mr. Fremming.
Yeah, this is, I don't quite know how to ask this, but always come up here. I think you have a dehumanifier up there that, you know, you open your mouth and all the moisture sucked out. Okay, I'm, I'm a little surprised about the motion for the agreement to West Yost Associates and Corolla Engineers before. Okay, so I have a little experience in radar systems design in terms of generating system requirements, detailed requirements, and then being, doing the systems engineering to make sure that it is designed properly, built properly. So you're going to have a different company basically oversee to make sure that the requirements that were developed are done properly. So I'm just, you know, at times that can cause problems, okay? You know, the, the people who actually developed the, the requirements, you know, build it this way, so on and so forth. Then you have another group of people who were not involved in that are coming in to, to make sure that is, is done properly. That can cause communication problems, so on and so forth. So I did see that you said that Corolla Engineers did bid on that last motion. I was just wondering if you could maybe give some more insight into why they were not chosen. And thank you for the presentation.
Anyone else in the room wishing to speak? Anyone online? Okay, closing public comment, Mr. Fremming. Go ahead and start with Mr. Puffer's question, please.
Sure, yeah. First question, I think, was when were bids submitted? That was July 15th. And your second question was, is this inclusive of material price increases and kind of the inflation that we're seeing nowadays? So the, the project is a lump sum cost, and the, the various bid items for, you know, whether it's pipeline, or the tank, or, you know, whatever it is, they are lump sum costs or unit costs. And as I understand it, the material price increases are to be absorbed by the contractor. They need to be aware of that. Now, there's possibly specifications within the agreement that directly speak to that item. But my understanding is that that is a risk that the contractor bears when they, when they submit their bid for a lump sum unit cost contract. And then, yeah, please do.
I'll just add a little color to that, too. Typically, the Public Works contracts require a contractor to guarantee their prices unless there's specific language that talks about price indexing. So you would index asphalt oil is a typical one. You would index it based upon a certain known index at the time, and then you would allow for deducts and increases in cost based upon that index. This project doesn't have that index. It was developed in a different specification format. So like Mr. Fremming was speaking, there, there may be a possibility that within those specifications, it does allow for an index, but I would highly doubt that it does.
Thank you, Mr. Breck. And then for Mr. Breckrum's.
Yes, and your question was, you know, the, the construction management, the final motion, number five on the list, you know, that we received proposals from three firms. One of them did come from Corolla Engineers, who is the design engineer. And then, you know, the recommendation, recommendation is to hire West Yost to do those. So there are many different ways you can approach construction management. Again, this would be the actual observation of the work taking place, the inspection, the structural observation, the materials testing. And both, both formats are pretty typical for either the design engineer to also have construction management personnel that would do it, and the city has done that several times, or also to have a third-party construction management group come in to do that. There are advantages and possibly disadvantages to both. You pointed out one being, you know, the design engineer, they're the ones preparing those plans and specs, and so they, they might be the most familiar with those. However, it doesn't preclude a third party from, you know, studying up on those same exact plans and specs that are industry standard and to, to perform a oversight role. It also provides them with a fresh set of eyes at times that, that might lead to some, you know, independent or varied solutions. Corolla Engineers is a great firm. Again, we've used construction management services from them on several projects. And with this particular one, we felt that West Yost provided the best, the best proposal and the best, best approach with, with the staff they are proposing. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Any other questions before Mr. Fremming sits down? Thank you, sir. Okay, comments or will of council?
Madam Clerk, motion to approve all five unless you want them broken down separately.
Uh oh, Mr.?
Mr. Petrolock, if you want them one by one. Why you got to be like that?
He's getting paid by the hour.
Okay, all right, motion to approve, number one.
Seconded.
Hold on, they're going to have a sidebar. Well, let's, let's get a motion in a second, then you read it before you call the roll. How's that? All right, so we have a motion, did you have? Okay, in a second, I'm sorry, okay. So we are on the first motion.
The motion reads, awarding bid and approving an agreement in the amount of $31,894,398, non-general fund, Fund 420, with Mountain Cascade Inc. of Livermore, California, for construction of city project number 18-69, surface, surface water distribution system improvements.
Motion? And motion in a second, call the roll, please?
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrabi?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Monet?
Yes.
Mayor Boogla?
Yes, the first one passes 5-0, moving to the second one. Motion to approve, motion number two. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second.
And the motion reads, approving a procurement agreement for purchase of pumps, electrical motors, and variable frequency drives with Patterson Pump of Tacoa, Georgia, in the amount of $832,985, non-general fund, Fund 420, for city project number 18-69, surface water distribution system improvements.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrabi?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Monet?
Yes.
Mayor Boogla?
Yes, passes 5-0, on to number three. Motion to approve, item number three.
Seconded.
In a second.
The motion reads, approving a purchase and sale agreement with Good Shepherd Lutheran Church for property located at 3,500 North Quincy Road for city project number 18-69, surface water distribution system improvements.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrabi?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Monet?
Yes.
Mayor Boogla?
Yes, passes 5-0, motion number four, please. Motion to approve, number four.
Seconded.
A motion in a second?
Do you ever make motions?
Motion reads, approving, approving Amendment Number Six to an agreement with Corolla Engineers of Walnut Creek, California, in the amount of $1,315,261, non-general fund, Fund 420, for engineering services during construction for city project number 18-69, surface water distribution system improvements.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrabi?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Monet?
Yes.
Mayor Boogla?
Yes, it passes 5-0, and the final one for West Yost Associates? Motion to approve, number five.
Seconded.
Motion in a second.
And the motion reads, approving an agreement with West Yost Associates of Davis, California, in the amount of $2,181,055, non-general fund, Fund 420, for construction management services for city project number 18-69, surface water distribution system improvements.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrabi?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Monet?
Yes.
Mayor Boogla?
Yes, and they all pass 5-0. Thanks for letting us do that one by one. Thank you, Mr. Fremming. Onto item B, request to authorize acceptance of the American Rescue Plan Act monies. Now that we spent 31 million plus, we'll try and get some money from Mr. Burke here. What do you have for us?
Good evening. Tonight, the item before you is to authorize the acceptance of the American Rescue Plan Act funding from the U.S. Department of Treasury in the amount of $15,753,190, and authorizing, authorizing the city manager to execute all the documents necessary to process the receipt and disbursement of those funds. On March 11th, 2021, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law and established the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program. This program is intended to provide support to state, territorial, local, and tribal governments in responding to economic and public health impacts of COVID-19 and in their efforts to contain impacts on their communities, residences, and businesses. The city of Turlock may use these funds to cover all eligible costs incurred during the period that begins on March 3rd, 2021, and ends on December 31st, 2024. As long as the award funds for the, for the obligations incurred by December 31st, 2024 are expended by December 31st, 2026. We received notification on July 15th, 2021, that we had received the first 50% of that money in the amount of $7,867,595. The second payment will be paid out in 12 months. The Department of Treasury released their interim filing, final, final rule on May 17th, 2021, which provides the guidelines and eligibility of funds. And four broad definitions of how the funds may be used. One, to respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency and its negative economic impact, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. It can be used to respond to workers performing essential work by providing premium pay to eligible workers. It can be used to replace revenue lost to provide government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to the COVID-19 epidemic. And in this case, revenue generated by utilities is excluded. And the last broad definition is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructures. Ineligible uses include depositing funds into any type of pension fund, rainy day fund, or any type of similar reserve, or to pay expenses related to financing outstanding debt or settlement agreements. Going back to the eligible uses, the economic impacts. So the assistance to households may include food assistance, rent, mortgage, utility assistance, or internet access. We may also provide assistance to small businesses and nonprofits to adopt safer operating procedures, weather periods of closure, or mitigate financial hardship caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. In order to comply with the guidelines, these businesses or nonprofits must identify the negative impacts of the pandemic and how the aid provides responses to these impacts. There are other definitions included in the staff report. Mr. Brown provided a list of potential wastewater and drinking water projects, which are outlined in the staff report, and includes the project that Mr. Fremming just described to you, so that would be an eligible use. Does, the interim final rule does provide that investments in broadband be made in areas that are currently underserved or unserved. So, and staff is requesting at this time to schedule a workshop with council, discuss a process to determine how you want to spend those funds. It's a large responsibility and a lot to discuss.
Wow. Okay, so the federal government, to quote Mr. Fremming, did us a solid. They gave us money.
Yes, he did.
Okay, questions for Ms. Burke for the moment? It's a lot to think about, rules are pretty strict, so all the cool ideas we had in our head are getting limited to other things like that.
So would we be able to pay with this American Rescue Act money? Our recruitment, our $100,000 recruitment monies?
I'm sorry.
Would we be able to pay our $100,000 recruitment bill with this money?
Consulting firm?
The consulting firm.
I don't, I don't believe so because the, it was, there wasn't a direct impact. I don't know who could make the nexus between the COVID-19 crisis.
It's really pretty strict then on, yeah, they, they switch things around on us. So would we be able to pay for, pay ourselves back for some of the monies that we had to pay out for the pandemic?
As long as those expenses happened after March 3rd.
Okay, okay, and then what about current, current salaries? Everything has to tie back into. Everything has to tie back into something that is COVID-related. We were injured by COVID and this money is
Correct.
unless it's going to be for these infrastructure projects, such as the water and/or improving our broadband?
Yes. And they do say that you can use it for premium pay for what they define as essential workers. Definition is pretty narrow on that also.
Okay.
And that has to be on top of regular salaries and benefits. There is a provision that would allow us to get staffing up to pre-pandemic levels. That, I've read several different things on that. One identifies that level at January 27 of 2020 and our employed staff at that time.
Okay. All right. It sounds like they've kind of tied our hands on this quite a bit. We do definitely need to have that workshop to
A lot of discussion.
to go over what we can and can't use it. Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Burke? Counselmember?
Who would be the person that we would call at the federal level? Is it our congressman that we would talk to to get a, like, a definitive answer on what these, whether or not something qualifies as an eligible activity? How do we make that determination?
We'd probably be better off contacting the Department of Treasury directly. They do have a phone number that they've offered to the different entities to call with questions. And there are different groups to the Government Finance Officers Association, also as fielding questions and calls. So we have other resources also.
And regarding the workshop, calendaring a workshop, how do you foresee that playing out?
By putting it in a public forum, you can get community feedback, which several, City of Modesto has done a really nice job. If you want to go to their website and look at their action plan, they did. I think they also tied it into their budget workshops. So over a series of about three workshops, they got community input and also divided it into three different areas that they wanted to use funding for. And it sounded like they set up ad hoc committees to determine what the community wanted to see with that money and to make sure that it fit within the guidelines.
Counselmember?
Would it be possible to also fund new programs that are, would be designed to combat basically how we work now, whether it be recreation, kind of with COVID in mind? Maybe it wasn't something that we designed during 2020, but it's something that we would think would be more suitable for today's conditions. I know that that's not directly impacted retroactively by the pandemic, but would that be something that's eligible?
What you could probably do is cover that with the revenue loss. There's a calculation. So what you do is compare revenue from going back as far back as 15, 16. And they have an inflation factor that you're allowed to put in for each fiscal year. And then you compare it with that pandemic period. And so whatever revenue that we have lost using that formula is eligible for use with this money. And recreation revenue is certainly one of those that would be included.
Okay. So even if we wanted to, let's theoretically design a new program that maybe we don't have a revenue stream for in those past years, but it's something that we maybe created, whether it be recreation, whether it be finance, whatever that looks like. If it's a new virtual system where we can pay for things online only, things like that. It wasn't something that we necessarily did in the past, but because of today's new normal, we might want to think of an opportunity to invest in a new program that would fit. Would that be eligible, you think?
For, as far as computer hardware and software, if we can tie it to an upgrade in cybersecurity specifically, that's eligible. And any type of protection for our systems, security of our systems, is an eligible use.
As well as our AC. I mean, that's a no-brainer. We've got to get
Upgrade it with the COVID.
Right. Better ventilation systems. Yes. Questions?
Affordable housing is something a lot of communities are putting this funding towards, correct? How does that work? Can you create funding structures to support private development that, like, is focused on affordable housing? Do you have to give it to nonprofits? Are you well-versed and familiar with how other communities have gone about making that available?
We can certainly do it through our housing program. And in addition to this $15.7 million we are getting, our housing program is also eligible for separate funding. I think theirs is like $5.2 million. They have not gotten their guidelines yet as to how they can use that money. They expect that in the fall sometime.
What, sorry, one other thing. When we do have those workshops, I don't know, I don't, we don't have anybody from housing here right now. But it'd be interesting to see the data of the last assistance we were able to provide and to have kind of a baseline of what the need's going to be. I know that we have to be cautious when looking at that data, though, because it's going to look very different once all of these moratoriums are lifted. But I think it'd be, that would really help in terms of how much allocation we're looking at rental assistance, mortgage assistance, things like that.
Right.
So, just a note.
Any other questions for Ms. Burke? Let's open it to the public. Anyone wishing to make a statement? Mr. Treewether?
I have one question regarding the internet access. I know that, I researched this several months ago, and we already have 100% internet coverage in the City of Turlock. There are five or six firms that are providing that. If you look on the internet, if you go on the internet and search it, you will see that that is the case. And I will bring that information to the following meeting and show it to you. So I'm thinking, so all this will do is just allow us to let, give money to students so that they can get that internet access. They don't have the money to buy or to buy the equipment to access the internet, or this pays for their monthly service fee, so they have access. Because I do know that we have 100% coverage in Turlock, and five or six companies are providing that service. So I don't understand what the internet portion of it is.
The eligible uses, they define as being able to make sure not only that everyone has access, but has access at, and they define the upload and download speeds.
Like our agendas?
So that that's available. They also mention being able, like you said, we could establish a program to assist residents or students or seniors in being able to access the internet, whether that be in some sort of stipend to help with their monthly costs. It would, it was, it's really up to this council to decide how that money is to be distributed.
Mr. Breckrum?
Quick and hopefully related question. One of the possible uses is rent, rental assistance. And with the perhaps ending of the moratorium on evictions, that may become much more important. My question actually is off to the side. If I remember correctly, a couple of months ago, when we talked about CDBG funds, a good amount, $600,000, something like that, if memory service correct, was going to be dedicated to rental assistance? Am I correct on that? Has anything been done? Has any program been set up? I don't know why I'm looking at you. I should be looking at the city manager for you. Has that program been set up? Has any money been distributed? What's the qualifications? You know, are you giving it to the individuals? Are you giving it to the landlords? You know, all those type of questions. Thank you.
We can't wait for the workshop, so we'll find out. Thank you. Anyone else in this room wishing to ask a question? Anyone online? No. Closing the public comment, bringing it back, the discussion is essentially to accept the money? It would be really sad to say no.
Motion to approve the resolution. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Could call the roll.
Counselmember Larson?
Yes.
Counselmember Nasrabi?
Yes.
Counselmember Franco?
Yes.
Counselmember Monet?
Yes.
Mayor Boogla?
Yes. Passes 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Burke. All right. Moving on to item C, there is a green sheet associated with it. And this is giving direction to staff to prepare, bring back a resolution, rescinding resolution 20009-246, and adopting new resolution identifying a revised contract change order procedure. Mr. Bray?
Yes. Good evening again, mayor and council. The item before you tonight is providing staff direction with revised policy and direction for a revised change order process or policy. Last week, the city manager and city clerk identified this item to seek direction from council. So I'm here to answer any questions on the existing policy in place right now and also take direction from this council to bring back at our next meeting any revisions that you would like.
Good questions for Mr. Bray. Questions? Question, yes.
In the resolution, it states that the budget subcommittee, are those individuals in the department that are overseeing the project? Or are those, like, what is, what is that?
Yeah. So the budget subcommittee, so this, let me back up. The resolution was put in place in 2009. And to my knowledge, that portion of the process has never been in place. The resolution identified members of council as well as staff that would review change orders on a case-by-case basis and then provide recommendation to council at the time. So since 2009, I'm not aware of that part of the process ever happening.
Any other questions? All right. Let's open it to the public. Anyone wishing to make a statement or a question? Okay. Anyone online? No. Closing the public hearing and bringing it back for some dialogue here. Anybody want to start?
Of course. You knew it would be me. Okay. In looking at the resolution from 2009, it actually was a pretty decent resolution. It was, it was meant to cut down on change orders. It was meant to make sure the public's money was spent properly. There's a couple of things that I would like to see changed. Number one, instead of a budget subcommittee, I would like it to be, my idea would be either the finance director would be looking at anything, or it could be brought back to the council. I'd also like to see it changed from, I think the city engineer at 2% is fine, but I'd like to see the, the city manager be brought back to 1%. And then anything over $50,000, since that is the city manager's limit, anything over $50,000 would be brought back to the city council. Then in some discussion with, with our city attorney, he gave me a link to a place called the National Association of State Procurement Officials. And in there, there are, contract changes are inevitable, and we can all agree on that. Amendments are typically approved by the procurement office. And it's important of having change management in process, place, and process in place. And it can't be overstated that it's important to do so. Good practice for handling unforeseen amendments effectively should be, should follow these principles. One, only changes that are within the general scope of the original contract should be accepted. Two, changes should be in accordance with the term of the contract. Three, only changes that are due to legitimate unforeseen circumstances should be allowed. Four, written determination should be required prior to amending the contract. Five, any changes need to be evaluated in terms of the impact of the scope, the schedule, and the budget. And six, formal written approval for all changes should be required prior to the change taking place. So I like, I like those. I'd like to see those be incorporated into our policy. And I think that just making sure that we're following the letter of the policy, which the current one is good. I think we can improve it a little bit. And then we just need to follow it. So those are my comments about the change orders. That's what I'd like to see.
Counselmember Larson?
Yeah, I just had a really quick, I had the same, one of the same ideas as our vice mayor with the budget subcommittee to be, instead of, because that doesn't exist, to have it be replaced with the finance director, but also the city attorney to have two bodies kind of oversee it. I think that if the city attorney, no?
Well, I'm sorry. I just, I was thinking too much money for the cost of an attorney to be there.
Oh, my point, that the resolution probably wouldn't have been overseen because that's the job of the city attorney, is make sure that we're doing everything, you know, legally and fine. And the resolution would have probably been stopped to be able to do that process. The, my other question to you, Mr. Bray, is theoretically, so, and I'm not super familiar with the, with the, with the entire, the entirety of a project and really the details of it. So if a change order didn't fit the criteria that our vice mayor just laid out, which is great criteria in theory, would then city staff have, would the whole project just stop? And would you have to come back and basically ask us to approve a new scope, a new resolution, to basically fit the need that the change order would? I'm wondering if that, something's going to have to come back to us or it's just going to sit there? So how would that look?
Yeah, correct. I think that's a good topic to bring up. I think that if a change order, if a change is needed, whether it is within the scope, unforeseen, or just, as we've seen recently with a lot of the ramp projects, tying into existing conditions for things that were contemplated on the plans. If the city requires contractors to not move forward with the work until the, the contract change order is issued, there is a potential, as it takes about five weeks or so to get the documents submitted to the clerk to get on the council's schedule. So there does exist that potential where the contractor is unable to progress with that work. It has a potential of delaying other parts of the work as well. That's why, you know, ever since I've, for 15 years, the change order process has, as long as the change is within the scope of the project, we're not adding different roads, we're not changing, materially changing the type of project, that the city engineer uses what he or she would believe in the best judgment on not affecting the progress of work. Our contracts, every public works contract spells out a potential for delay claims if the agency delays the contractor from progressing with the work. And so it's, it's a balancing act of keeping the work moving, avoiding delay claims, while providing changes to the scope of work.
Other questions, comments, direction?
Yeah. So my issue, Mr. Bray, point blank, is the city, we go out and we seek bids from companies and we get, you know, bid A that's $100,000 and bid B that's 90 and then 80. And then we take the $80,000 bid and then we end up with $30,000 or $40,000 in change orders. And we have no way of knowing that those other bids that came in, maybe they were more spot-on or not so spot-on. The feedback from the conservative taxpayers is they're seeing the change orders come across the consent calendar and it's, you know, $40,000 here, $50,000 here, $100,000 here. And it doesn't look like it's anything in comparison to the actual project. But where the taxpayers are spot-on and concerned about the dollars that are being spent is when you add it all up in the big scheme of things, it's a lot of money. And it just seems like our, we have a lot of change orders coming across the agenda. That's exactly why I brought it up at the last meeting, because we keep getting hit from citizens.
Okay. Yeah. So, you know, as the vice mayor stated, changes are part of construction, right? They're going to happen. I don't have the diagram with me, but if you, if you plot the cost of a change order versus the amount of time spent in design, if you think about that conceptually, zero time spent, you're going to have extremely high change orders, a lot of time spent. It's going to gradually go down towards zero. It may or may not hit zero. If you look at the cost of design time, the actual cost versus the time, that is pretty much uniformly in a, I guess I'd call it a 45 degrees increasing direction plotted on the same graph. So what the typical process would be is to look for that sweet spot where you're not over-designing. You're not spending a bunch of money on design trying to minimize a finite amount of change orders. So the, the, the concept of change orders is really more or less a conscious decision to try and not over-design something. to try and not over-design something. You're trying to find that sweet spot.
So is there, is it, is it possible, because I know some cities have gone to, okay, here's the project upfront in the RFP or whatever it is, no change orders are going to be permitted on the project. Is it possible to go to that on any of our projects?
I think some of the projects, it is. It depends on the type of project. You know, you can't, the agency cannot pass the, the ownership or the liability on to the contractor. They have to bid it based upon the plans that are prepared. So much like the, the weighing of change orders versus design time, you know, our staff is weighing, how much time do we spend on this project and, and get five projects out in a year, or do we spend more time designing them and only get two projects out a year? So it's, it's, it's a balancing act for sure.
Vice Mayor?
Just for sake of seeing what it is, since I took office, we've had 12 change orders, and they've been at just under a million dollars.
Councilwoman?
And it's, on that same breath, I think you make a really good point, Mr. Bray, that, that if this is an issue that we're trying to address in terms of change orders, and if it is true, it is true that we've had 12 change orders come across our desk, I wonder if there's also a correlation with how much design staff we've lost over the last five years? If that's the side that we're, we're really looking, there's a way to kind of fix the issue of having this minute, this much change and unexpected issues arise at where we have to be doing that. And I agree, I've also had a lot of citizens say, why are you, how can you just, how can you be approving that much money if the initial bid was, was, was this amount? There's a huge difference there. There's a large percentage difference there. So I haven't heard it put that way, that the, that the visual of having the ability to kind of be the appropriate amount of staffing about it, the amount that we ask in terms of design expectancy out of it could also reduce this number. So that's an interesting point. I really appreciate you bringing that up.
So, Mr. Bray, I, I would like to, to add to the conversation that it's apparent that we do a lot of going over budget. And I used to make Mr. Pitcock mad because I called it a slush fund instead of a contingency fund, because that's where you take your, your change orders from essentially, right? So to address this with our over-budgets and then coming in on time, I think that if we did a pre-qualification of all the public contracts over $100,000, this pre-qual would be for a year. And this ensures that we're being responsible for the taxpayers' money. It would make sure we're on time, within budget. And if something crazy happens, we know that you have the due diligence for safety and of everybody, and that we can always convene a meeting if it wasn't something that you couldn't make the decision for. All these public contracts would be awarded with the most responsible and responsive general contractors and subcontractors. So we're avoiding the contract bids who are always continually being low bid, they get it, and then they, they basically make up the difference between everybody else by doing the change orders. And so this way, it doesn't cost us a dollar. It doesn't cost staff any time, it doesn't cost the, the general contractors and the subcontractors. Everybody's doing on their honor. TUSD does every single one like this, and it's for three years. I think Merced High School Union or something does it for one year. This is something we give, look, we're being transparent, we're trying to do this, this isn't any harm to you, it makes it easier for you, I would say. And we're trying to make sure that we wiggle our way through those that are costing us a lot. And we could easily pull that and find out who they are. We kind of, we probably all know. So if we're trying to avoid people being rewarded over because they know to bid less, do the change orders, this is our chance to make sure you don't even have to worry about that stuff. And we're not wasting the taxpayers' money, they can all see it every time. So I think pre-qualifications is maybe not, I, I, you know, I think a year is, is reasonable on a yearly basis, but I don't know what my colleagues are thinking, but I think we should bring that back to the table as well, please.
Okay. I've not heard of pre-qualification before. I'll work with the city attorney for sure. You know, the school districts work under a different section of the public contract code. But it's something that, between the two of us, we can definitely evaluate.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other input for Mr. Bray before? Anything you wanted to ask us?
I think I have everything.
All right, great. Thank you for that. Let me see. So where we're at, we need a motion to direct, well, I don't know if we, you've been directed, I don't know that a motion is necessary.
I don't need anything.
Yeah. You heard us, yes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. All right, city manager update? That's you, Ms. Eddy. Susan?
Tammy.
Caught you off guard, didn't we?
Yes. I was sleeping. Okay, so 10A, this matter is related to council items for future consideration, and the resolution that's attached provides procedures and rules for placing matters on the agenda. And with that, we would bring that forward to be able to help answer any questions if anyone wanted to bring something on to, on the agenda, because the resolution's pretty clear.
So there, there's been a number of times where I've made requests for specific items and then talked to staff members, looking at the staff shall assist in framing the request, with the anticipation that it was going to be arriving at the next council items for future consideration, and we just haven't followed through on that.
And, and the, the city clerk and I talked about that, and that's pretty much why this is coming back. So it just clears things up and will help assist in when you want to put something on, the protocol's here.
And that goes back to the resolution from 2008?
Yes.
And it gives the, the methods in, in the, in the resolution?
Yes, it's real clear.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to tell you, I don't always get everything I want on there either, but I think part of our problem is that we don't have the staff. We're, everybody's overworked and we're not, we, we can only put so much out there. And so I, Mr. Petralakis and, and Ms. Eddy have told me on several occasions, yeah, it's not making it. And I'm hearing you guys, and so I'm trying to, you know, help facilitate that, but, I mean, we only have so many people, and until we get our staffing, we're, we're going to kind of limp forward, hopefully.
Yeah, I just, knowing that this is the process, I'll be very explicit in my requests, and I'll work with staff so that we assure that it does arrive, add an items for future consideration, so we can, in a clear and transparent way, communicate to the public what our priorities are. Because there are plenty of instances where we've sat here and multiple people making requests, one arrives on the agenda, the subsequent meeting, another one arrives following one, and other things just get continually ignored. And I think it's important that the public recognizes what the will of the council is in a clear and transparent manner.
I appreciate that. The first two years I was mayor, I, I barely got anything on the agenda, so I understand that. I totally appreciate that. So here we are, both experiencing that, and one way, yes.
Maybe this is a question for our attorney. And I know, we've, we've done it before, we're like, ask a go, like, I want this item on a future agenda, for a future agenda, and then like, multiple people nod their heads. But, and that's not really a vote, so the majority is not really all in favor, or they want to seem like they're in favor, but never really gets on the agenda. So can we request a vote for futures, for future consideration? It might be a Roberts or Zorah order question. But like, if I wanted something on, and I'm like, okay, well, I think the majority of council could agree, instead of people just nodding, can we vote? I'll vote to do that.
I think under this one, we would have to submit it 10 days prior to the meeting, and it would arrive.
And then, but we, a vote, though, instead of just like, yes, oh, that sounds like a good idea.
I think, is that, is that not how it's going to work? It will arrive in the items for future consideration for a vote as to whether or not there will be staff time determined?
No, the, the item shall identify the council member making the request and contain a brief description of the subject matter. Staff shall assist in framing the request. Council will consider only whether staff time and city resources should be expended on the item. Any such items deemed to by the city manager to be urgent. So we would give them direction.
The city's got some.
I was going to just have the city clerk explain it. She explained it very well to me. It's pretty easy, and I think it just simplifies, and it allows you to get what you want this way. Please. So basically, it is, if you look at the, the items, the mayor can always place something on the agenda, and this mayor and the city council together can. If one city council member wants to see something on, they do need to follow the 10-day request to the city manager. At that time, staff would prepare a brief report, and it would be brought back to council, at which time the council, it would be a vote, because we would need to get the general consensus of the council to see whether staff time and energy monies that would be spent in preparing that item is the will of the council. So basically, that's how it would come back. It would just be a, a simple staff report that would just ask, what is the will of the council on this? And then at that time, if the council said, yes, we would like to see a report brought back, then staff would be assigned, whichever staff member would be overseeing that item, they would prepare an actual staff report for that to come back to the council. Does that make sense?
No, that totally makes sense. And I totally, I agree, I think that it should be totally clear. Yeah, exactly. The only other thing, since this was made, we, we kind of touched on this when we voted down our new handbook and then went back to the previous one. Since it was made in 2008, it doesn't really, it doesn't, it wasn't made during the time when we had districts. And I'm wondering if there's any legal issues with having, you know, district representation that were elected and then not having direct, the, the direct ability to have discussion items be placed on a public agenda? It's just a question, wondering if there's any legality involved. Because we're in districts, and because we're elected under the California code, and there's a public meeting, all these other things, is there, is there anything that would, is it legal to have a resolution that basically doesn't allow a person to put something on the agenda on their own accord, on their own elected seat, rather than depending on other people or other elected officials to do so, besides the mayor? But that's the, yeah, it'd be interesting.
My understanding, previous, my first two years as mayor, they just basically said it was majority, and I didn't get things on, and I, I mean, I don't have a district, but I, so I, I mean, I, I don't know. It seems kind of odd, but yeah, find out the answer, that'd be great. So did you have any other update? Are you done? Ms. Eddy? Yes, please.
The home consortium item was pulled from tonight's agenda. The reason is, the funds that will be used to repay the local home consortium account will be the successor agency, which was formerly the RDA funds. The successor agency consultants are reviewing the repayment structure, as it may need to be considered, by the successor agency board and not the city council. So we're getting a clarification on that.
Great.
And one more.
One more.
I don't know if all of you have had the opportunity to meet, I'm going to mess her name up, and Allison, practice with me. Lisa Schimmer, Schimmel Finneg. Did I do it right?
All right.
Okay. Lisa has recently been hired, she worked in Manteca, and she is the executive administrative assistant to the city manager and the deputy city clerk. And you're seeing three people up here, because Kelly Weaver has come back as a retired annuitant as the interim city clerk. And Allison is up here to teach everyone about the, the process with Zoom, and just so everything would just kind of go clean, so.
Welcome, Lisa, welcome back, Kelly. Thank you, Allison, for helping them.
I've now had five people in the clerk's office teaching me things, and I've needed every one of them.
It's not a resounding thing. All right, so moving on to council items for future consideration, that gets a little quirky now that we just talked over that, but anything, anything? Council questions, comments, and announcements? Councilwoman Larson? Nothing? Councilwoman Ms. Eddy?
Yeah, just want to take a minute and thank the Syrian-American Civic Club, the mayor, and the, anyone that recognized this remembrance of the Syrian genocide this past week. It's a very important day to our community, and it's critical that we remember these atrocities of the past, so as to not repeat them. And it's one of the, if not the most defining characteristic of our culture, it's, it is why we are who we are. So thank, thank you so much for coming out to that event and continuing to be a, a strong ally for the Syrian community. Another comment, Turlock library opening for the general public, got to get out there, get, get your kids, young and old, your, get out there. It's a beautiful new facility, long overdue, really, really happy to see that come to Turlock. And I made a, I took a couple, my two little cousins out there who were like, library boring, it's just a bunch of books. And it was so boring for an hour, because we had to listen to people congratulating engineers for doing a nice thing, and they were so bored. But once they got into the library, they were like, in awe of the place, and they were running around, hopping on things that they weren't supposed to. So I think I made a couple fans of the library, and we're going to get back out there and get them excited about reading soon. The other thing, regarding some of the public comment stuff, where we have a little bit of, like, infighting between community members, the thing that we, we try lean on over and over is creating an inclusive community, one that's tolerant, one that's kind, compassionate. This, this, you know, like, name-calling and all that stuff that's happening between members of our community, recognize that we as council members can't censor our public from being, expressing themselves in any which way. And a single individual in this community will never represent the entirety of Turlock. There are always going to be differences between members of the public, and I just ask for those of you that are calling in and creating hostility and that kind of stuff, that you do whatever you can to try and work with those that you may have differences with. I promise you that there's probably a lot more that you have in common than you recognize. And that's, that's all. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
In regards to National Night Out, thank you, Chief, and thank you to Erica Grace. She was amazing. She put together a fabulous first night back after COVID. Thanks to the Parks and Rec, the Columbia Park was fabulous, too, and Fire Department. You guys made a lot of kids' night. Next year, we're going to make it much better, but this year, coming out was great. So thank you to all our staff for doing a great job for National Night Out.
My sentiments exactly, Chief. You guys took such good care of us, and I know Erica Grace worked her tail off. And shout out to Lieutenant Silveira for taking such good care of me and District 2 that night. It was a great night, and we're very appreciative of, of what you did. The community response was so positive, because people were so happy, because we didn't get to do it last year, and the turnout was a little bit less this year, but overall, an overwhelmingly positive experience. My last comment is, I'm disappointed that Mr. Treewiler left early tonight. So if anybody talks to him, I would love to know where he's getting his statistics from when he says that 100% of Turlock has internet coverage. Because I have duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes that have no access to internet, and I know that, because she's been on me about getting a list together so that we can work with Spectrum to get them access. So I would really like to know where his statistics are coming from, and I'd look to, like to see that information.
Great. And then finally, again, National Night Out to everyone that helped, the whole city came together, and it was so much needed for, after COVID, people just wanted to hang out, see their neighbors, and just, just sigh that they get to be with people. Thank you for driving this lazy, Chief. You got stuck with me. And thank you to the, the fortune cookie company, Golden Gate, that was pretty cool, from Chinatown, San Francisco, that was really awesome. And then to my, my colleagues and to, to the, the people who come and, and ask about our consent items, we, if you, you're reading it in advance, I mean, and again, I know, I had to come here to get, to download my agenda, so I appreciate that people are having trouble with it, I get that, because I don't have the coverage where I live. But we need to ask in advance. Consent items are pretty much a foregone conclusion, and if we're taking two hours to get through consent, it means that we're, we're doing something wrong, and, and so I'm trying to address it. So I'm going to point you out for a second. If you see something and you're reading it in advance, please just ask staff about it, so that we can, we can address it and maybe get through this a little faster, just even with, with us. Let's talk to staff, let's try and work through this, because nobody's trying to embarrass anybody, and nobody's trying to make this, you know, like, stay all night, because, you know, there's a curfew out there. No, I'm just kidding. Anyhow, thank you all for that. And closed session. Kelly?
Our closed session items for tonight are, there's three of them. 13A is conference with labor negotiators.
13A is conference with labor negotiators. California Government Code 54957.6A. Not with, oh. Okay, I just needed to know if I could, okay, thank you, Allison. Agency-designated representative, interim city manager, Sarah Eddy, employee organization, Turlock Police Officers, employee organization, Turlock City Police Employees Association, employee organization, Turlock Firefighters Association, Local 2434, employee organization, Turlock Management Association, Public Safety, and Unrepresented Employees. Item B is liability claims, California Government Code 54956.95. Claimant is Cheek, Melissa, and Medina, comma, Manuel. Agency claimed against, is, agency claimed against the city of Turlock. Item C is another liability claim, California Government Code 54956.95. Claimant is Caitlin Newton. Agency claimed against the city of Turlock.
Thank you. Alright, we will report out, should there be something?
You got it. Good job!
Thank you.
I thought that was gonna be a good one, and I'll go.
You, you did quiet down the talking just a little bit, but that was loud and it's, it's all.
We had fun. And we laughed hard. Oh, God, no. We told old stories and laughed very... We told old stories and laughed very...